I feel like I am in a theater up here. And you know, he should, he should probably also have like a performance of Shakespeare's A Midsummer's Night Train, that's how much space, that's how much space is up here. But um, y'all, it is November. It has been a full year and I am so excited to discuss everything that has been happening in District One and across Clayton County this year. Um, my name is Elena Roots, I serve as Vice Chair on the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, and of course, I am your Commissioner for those who live here in District One. And hello to the folks who are joining us on Zoom. Um, we have someone who will be monitoring the chat. So if you have questions that you type, uh, that you want to ask, feel free to type those in the chat on Zoom and we'll get to those questions as well. Alright, so first, we're just gonna do some agenda setting and go through, you know, over two slides. Discuss a little bit about what we will be talking about today. Uh, for those who have attended my town halls in the past, um, I do like to have presenters and our representatives from Clayton County departments who will come by and provide some updates on what they're doing across the county and also provide an opportunity for you all to ask questions. Uh, so we will first have just a quick interactive icebreaker. Don't worry, it's not gonna have you walking around the room. It's something that you can do directly from your phone. And it's just an opportunity for me to get feedback from you all as we head into 2026. Uh, we will have first a brief presentation from our Community Affairs, um, unit within the Clayton County Police Department. Then we'll hear from Community Development. Uh, they will talk about zoning ordinance as well as the housing study that Clayton County is, um, conducting. And then we will hear from our folks at C and E for Transportation and Development, and they will provide some updates on the transportation study that at least began just a few months ago. And we'll have another really quick interactive opportunity and we'll hear from department updates. Uh, we do have our, our, a few departments who are in the back. So I'll feel free to get up, move about, uh, through some of the tables that are in the back. We also have some light refreshments and we'll go ahead and get started with our icebreaker. So everyone can pull out their phone and scan the QR code that's gonna come up on the screen. Alright, you go ahead. Okay. So, um, I would say quite honestly, I would not be able to do the work that I do as Commissioner if I did not have an incredible constituent aide who did not know that I was gonna put her on the spot. For anyone who has called, uh, the District One office or who's reached out to me to schedule a meeting, I'm sure that you all have interacted with Jordan. So I do wanna take some time to just appreciate and acknowledge Jordan for all the incredible work that she has been doing since she came on board me in March. So I have hers and my contact information above. Um, please feel free to reach out, ask questions throughout. And we also have contact cards in the back. So one of the things that I initiated when I was elected last year, um, was community meetings and community outreach meetings. The first one that I had was on the military. Because I was elected in July and the very next month, there was a vote on the military. And so that was really the first opportunity that I had to really bring everyone from District One together so that we could talk about the military. Our illustrious Tax Commissioner Danielle Smith came and did a presentation and talked a little bit about, about the military. And this, this series of, this series of community meetings continued with Let's Talk About Budget, which was in June of this year. And we talked about the budget process. We talked about, um, department requests. We talked about what it would look like for the Board of Commissioners to vote on the process, uh, to vote on the budget. But also, for folks who don't know, community engagement is very, very important to me. So making sure that people knew when the hearings were so that they could come out and, and ask questions about the budget and talk with the department heads and to talk with the Commissioners before the budget itself was passed. And I see a couple of faces who were at the most recent community meeting that I had, which was Let's Talk About Zoning. We got a fantastic presentation from our Community Development, now Community Development and Economic Development Office, as well as a sneak, a sneak preview around, uh, some of the zoning, the zoning plans that will be happening in the historic Rex Mill area in partnership with Atlanta Regional Commission. And I know Mr. Mickey was just giving us, before the meeting started, he was just giving us a little bit of history around Rex Mill. We have a national treasure in the Rex area. That is a mill that was built in the 1830s. And the owner also, also constructed rocking chairs. And one of those rocking chairs actually ended up in the White House for President...
Kennedy.
President, for President Kennedy. So how about, how, how's that for a little bit of historical knowledge around what's, what we have here in Clayton County? So as we proceed into the, the year 2026, I can't, again, cannot believe it, it's already November, I wanna hear from you all. What are some of those topics that maybe we can't deep dive, deep into at Town Hall? What are some of those topics that you wanna hear about next year? And so, uh, I need everyone to pull out their phones, scan the QR code that is on either screen here. And we're gonna use a little website, it's called Mentimeter. You don't need to download anything. Uh, you're gonna put that code in. And what will happen is just type in some of the topics. You can type in as many topics as you want and we'll pull up the screen and then we'll be able to actually visualize what are some of the, what are some of the topics that folks want to hear about? And I'm gonna pause there because I really wanna, before I say anything, I really wanna hear what are some of the topics that you all want to see for us to do a deeper dive discussion on? And we'll pull up that Mentimeter app in just a moment. But go ahead and scan the QR code and then type in, uh, that seven-digit number.
Ms. Kim, do you have a question? What if we don't use QR codes?
Oh, we have post-it notes in the back. And you can, we have post-it notes, we have really large post-it notes and then you can write those up there as well. I like the, I like the visuals and also this is a great way for us to capture that information and I don't have to send it home with Jordan for her to type it all up.
It's okay, alright.
Was everyone able to access the website, the Mentimeter website? And for the folks who are joining us on Zoom, you can also participate and we'll be able to see your suggestions on the screen here as well. Alright, so while, so here we are. So some of the topics that I see that y'all wanna hear, you know, a longer discussion on includes voting, traffic cameras, ooh, Transportation and Development will be talking about. Traffic calming, traffic cameras. I see Mount Zion Road Improvement. I know, I think I spoke with someone directly about that earlier today. Sidewalks, beautifications, better restaurants. When roadwork will be completed, hopefully again, we'll have an answer to that question for you all today. Protected walking paths. I see elections and Board of Elections. Housing, entertainment, alright. I think a couple of folks have typed in sidewalks. Sidewalks is coming up very prominently. Alright, economics, jobs, more restaurants, trash along the right of way. We do have our Refuge Control, uh, our Refuge Control Department and they will be giving a presentation. We'll talk all about Clay Clayton and all the opportunities, uh, that you all have to be able to report any trash, illegal dumping that you see, deceased animals, and our wonderful, uh, Refuge Control Department will handle that. Alright, Neighborhood Watch. Just talked about code enforcement, bike lanes, renting, like rental units? Commerce revitalization. Community Development, that's gonna be on y'all. Alright, thank you. And then for our folks who weren't using the QR codes, if you wanna, if you wanna shout them out, Ms. Kim, Mr. Mickey, if y'all wanted to shout out any topics that you all wanna add?
I'm pretty shout now.
Yes, sir. You have any topics in mind?
Zoning.
Yes, sir. Ms. Kim?
I would like to know the positive outcomes for the year for grants that were given to different entities and what the battle for and what we were seeing and what was the benefit to them? Because the reports are coming out later, rather, two years later. That's a lot of money and they're really, some of them are contradictory reported.
Okay, so that sounds like something that might be better addressed in a working session with the four Board of Commissioners around the Clayton County Local Assistance Grant that the Commissioners do assign to local nonprofits every year.
So we try to, I think we need an audit.
We're gonna, we're gonna stay on IED's side specifically handled in District One.
Property values have dropped, so are we going to, um, to accommodate that in our taxes that were paid right now that are going? Property values have dropped considerably.
I think I saw someone else put on there taxation and property taxes. So instead of, like I mentioned, we had a meeting specifically around the village the last time that the military was increased here in Clayton County. So perhaps a broader conversation around property taxes. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm going to bring up our, um, we got our Chief, we have our Captain, and we have our Community Affairs. I'll go ahead and bring y'all up, uh, for a short presentation.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Officer, I'm the head of the Clayton County Police Department. I'm the Chief of Police Kevin Roberts. Thank you for, Commissioner, for the invitation. Of course, to my left, I have your great Captain, Captain Chris McGreen. Uh, my purpose to start this presentation is to start with an overview, which usually begins with our crime. Now you wanna know what our crime looks like? Let me ask somebody. Somebody raise their hand and let me know what they think the crime looks like in Clayton County. Not you, Mr. Green. Earlier today, you know, Lakey McGreen.
I think it looks good. I feel safe, nothing's ever happened to me. I've been here over 98, to now.
Well, just so y'all know, I slid a $20 when I parked my truck. But she's, she's absolutely right. The year-to-year comparison for Clayton County and our crime, we're down 21% in overall crime at the end of March. Then Gray saw a decrease last year and that trend continues because of the partnership between our ABC, our law enforcement partners, and the community. So having you here right now today helps us do what we're doing and we would ask that you continue your efforts to help our crime continue to trend in a positive direction. We do have some categories where we've seen overall increases. For example, our homicide hit at 27 this time last year, we're at 26. Not a huge increase, but any homicide is one homicide too many. And as we approach the holidays, we often see conflicts and unfortunately, they may result in fatal, uh, deaths and we don't want that. So as you move into the holidays and those stresses come into place, remember that we need you to de-escalate, which will mean somebody needs to leave or somebody needs to call the police. What we don't wanna do is have our conflicts and death. Can we agree on that?
Yes.
Outstanding. Um, I gave y'all overall crime numbers, but you can get them yourself anytime of the day or night, 24/7, at our website, claytonpolice.com. And if you engage our website, you can move to our crime statistics button, the number that I gave you and the rest of the numbers for our crimes are there for you to see anytime you want to. We try to update them monthly. Uh, if you go to the website today, the numbers that are on there are for the end of September. The team should have them updated through October by COVID business Monday. What I read to you is what will be posted on Monday as it relates to our overall crime. Also, if you go to their website, you engage our crime statistics, there's a crime mapping feature on there that allows you as a citizen to put in your address or any address in Clayton County to see the crime incidents that occur, occurred around. It won't have names, just incidents and you can see based on your address or any address you put in county, what incident of crime to have occurred. That's our way of keeping you informed all the time. We've seen this reduction in crime, like I said, as it relates to our partnerships with our law enforcement agencies and the community, but also personnel. We're doing great in our recruitment efforts. Right now, we have 14 sworn vacancies for police officers and 11 vacancies for dispatches. I key in on those numbers because we have seen tremendous vacancies in those areas ever since COVID. Our sworn vacancies were at 80 and now we're down to 14. We have a sworn allotment for police officers of 393. What does that mean? That translates to more men and women groups on the ground patrolling the streets of Clayton County. And I think as a result of those recruitment efforts, we're seeing this trend continue in the right direction. So with that, we're hiring, we're hiring, we're hiring. I ask that you go to our website, you can see our vacancies on the website. We added some buttons there where you can actually apply for the vacant positions on our website and it connects you with the application through X R. If we keep our numbers going the right way, I think we'll continue to see our crime trending the right way. Right now, we have 21 recruits in our academy. That's a great number and we're hiring for our next academy. So please, 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 if you know some young men and women who seek a career in law enforcement, we would love to have them. I prioritize Clayton County homegrown talent from Clayton County High Schools and the poor Clayton State. If they come, they apply and they meet all of our requirements, it's my pleasure to onboard them first. Does that make sense? Alright, we talked about crime. We're in the month of November, it's the shopping season. And if you pay attention to your weather come Monday morning, you're gonna need some jackets and long sleeves. So we have some tendencies to leave our vehicles running when it gets cold. I implore you not to do that. I encourage you to hop into your vehicle and stay with it if you seek to warm it up because you not in your vehicle while it's running is an invitation for a automobile theft. We don't want that, correct?
Correct.
So if you will, let's remind our partners, our neighbors, when you see that car running outside, Kenny James or Django, please get your vehicle before it drives away. Alright, also, time for shopping, it's that season. We're gonna shop, we're gonna get packages. We have to be diligent in the way we handle those packages. If at all possible, schedule, schedule your packages to be delivered to your residence while you're home, if you can. If not, this is a great time, if you haven't done so already, to build a relationship with a neighbor so that when those packages come and if you wait for an extended period of time, maybe that neighbor will look out for you and bring that package with you. Uh, also, while you're shopping about and you're shopping communities and plazas, if you're going in the store, buying packages, bringing it out, putting it in the car, please be aware of your surroundings. It might be prudent once you put that package in the car to reload, relocate the vehicle to another parking space in that area if somebody's watching. Preferably in the trunk. So with that, that's all I have. I'm gonna yield a floor to your Captain, who's the subject matter expert for everything in your district, Chris McGreen.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. As you said, my name is Christopher Green and I am your Captain. I don't know about great, but I'm the Captain. Switching up. So, um, I have been here with Clayton County for 28 years, 26 here. Um, I've seen a lot of change in Clayton County. And one thing that I haven't seen a change in, and that's the heart of the citizens. You guys love this county. Um, you are very vigilant and giving information to us. And I wanna encourage that to continue because without your help, we're, we're not going to be successful. Uh, we can't be everywhere all of the time. As nice as it would be to be able to do that, it's just not practical. So we rely a lot on you guys to help us out. So if you see something, say something. Okay, it's your neighborhood. If it's a neighbor, you know, I know a lot of folks don't wanna get involved. They're scared to get involved. You can remain anonymous when you call in, but make that effort to help out your neighbor because it might be your neighbor that needs to help you out one day. Okay? So, um, I'm up at the Second One precinct at 161 Amble Block Road. Um, I won't tell you that I'm there all the time because I'm not. Um, I like to get out and be in the streets. Uh, sometimes it gets me in a little trouble. Uh, I, I like to be out there doing what my patrolman is doing. Um, I expect that of them, so I shouldn't be able to expect that of myself. Um, and it gives me an opportunity to come out and meet you guys.
That's what you call leadership.
Yes, sir. Yes, we're, we're leader. Um, but if, if you don't see me out and about, uh, come by the office. Uh, I'd be more glad to sit down and talk with you all. Y'all have any questions, uh, anything that you wanna go over, my office is open to you. Uh, if I'm not there, um, Monday through Friday, I'm somewhere in the county. Um, and if I'm not at my office, uh, ask the, uh, one of the officers or the secretary of the Department of the Watch Office to get in contact with me and they'll give me a shout and I, and I'll come back. Um, I don't have a problem with that. I'm flexible unless the, the Chief has me in his office. So, uh, if you have any questions, please feel, feel free to ask, okay? Thank you all.
Hello, my name is Officer Valencia Estable and I'm a part of the Community Affairs unit. And one of the systems that we handle, all the Neighborhood Watch meetings, all the HOEDs that you guys have and that you would like to please come to, um, we also handle Assistant Police Academy, I'm sorry, Assistant Police Academy for citizens. And also, um, any community events that you guys all have that you would like the police department to come to, I'll be your contact person. And any issues that you have in the neighborhood, you could contact me and I'll relay that message to Captain Green. So basically, I handle any, everything that comes with Second One. And I, my information is right there and I also have cars for anybody who would like some that can pass out to you guys.
Now is the time for your questions you may have. And I've been told we got three minutes. No, I'm just kidding, she said five. Yes, ma'am?
We had a solicitation in our neighborhood, door-to-door solicitation. And I had one as, as early as yesterday. And, um, there were two gentlemen soliciting in our neighborhood, but they pick and choose the houses that they were going to. We had them on ring doorbell camera, one of them. Um, and when I were talking to our neighborhood, all our neighbors, we know everybody. And so I checked and they did go through some of the houses, but they didn't stop at all of the houses, which leads me to believe, and it was during the evening, like a little bit after lunch, which is highly unusual for anybody to wanna solicit for business. So can we share those pictures with you, Officer Valencia Estable?
That's fine, yes you can. And when you share, can you just put your neighborhood, your, um, the address or main streets so that we can look into it?
And secondly, can we have that kind of slowed down? Is there a way we can put a, uh, a sign in the neighborhood that says, "No Solicitation"? I have one on my window, but I just don't like people that I don't know coming to my door.
The best way to address that is just when this happens, give us a call. And, you know, I, I know a lot of folks who would like to call the Commissioner, they'd like to call the Chief, but call 911 immediately. Uh, and even if you don't, you don't perceive it to be an emergency, it's okay to call 911. Call that number and that gives us a more immediate response to the problem. So we're more likely to come in contact with those folks and ask them if they have a permit to be out soliciting. And if they're not supposed to be there, then we can get them out. Because like you said, 12 o'clock in the afternoon, it would stand to reason that you wanna do that more around 6:00 at night when the folks are at home, uh, at home at work. So yes, please call 911 immediately and allow us to get that opportunity to get an officer out there and then we can assess the situation from there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Uh, this is not necessarily for you, but I was wondering, uh, can we have roadblocks again?
Talking about, uh, traffic details where we have contact?
Just to let people know that you all are there?
Yes, ma'am, we do that, uh, still?
Like there used to be one at, um, O-Rex and, uh, what was that? I mean, at Maddox Road?
Yes, ma'am.
Because, uh, you know, it's a lot of people in the area and we need to know who's in the area. But I do like to see police cars parked every now and then, over in the school parking lot. Because the scariest things, it's not in Clayton, but it's saying, in the path you ride along this street and it's like a ghost town, you see the houses, but there's no activity. And anytime there's nobody on the street, that's an opportunity for things to go wrong.
Apologies, we're checking the audio, um, for our participants, apologies for that.
But yeah, I know, um, I don't know if it was the Sheriff's Department or the Police Department, but I'd like to see roadblocks again. Y'all don't do it no more?
That's Clayton, that's Clayton County and yes, we still do them. Uh, I will admit that we don't do them as frequently as we once did, but, uh, yes, we still do them. Um, I am a big traffic officer. Um, it may hurt some folks feelings, but I love to enforce traffic. Um, so I, I do that with my patrol. So they go out and they do, uh, details as well. We also have a traffic unit and that traffic unit comes out and helps us from time to time. Uh, and what we're focusing on at this point is pedestrians. We're having a, uh, influx of pedestrians getting hit by vehicles. So we're trying to, uh, at this time, focus our traffic enforcement on those folks that aren't crossing roadways properly or they're walking along the roadways, uh, where they shouldn't be to try to prevent people from getting hit and killed by vehicles.
I just wanna add one thing about the, the road check request. Years ago, the state changed the law and made requirements that required officers or, or police departments to actually plan road checks in advance. And the plan is usually predicated upon vehicle accidents or fatalities for citizen complaints. So when we were doing traffic as patrolmen, we could just pull up anywhere we wanted to and set up a road check, I wouldn't say roadblock anymore. It doesn't allow us to do that anymore, so we have to plan those things. So to your point, the great thing about today is about getting to know your Captain so you can call her direct and make that complaint that will initiate a road check, road check in the designated area. I just wanna provide that, Claire.
You didn't mention, maybe you had a question?
Yes. Captain Green, in your earlier conversation about soliciting, I caught a little blip that are you saying that anybody who did soliciting has to be permitted? Is that a requirement?
Yes, sir, it is a requirement.
Okay, so anybody coming by door soliciting who don't, what does this permit look like? What, they wear a badge, my permit number is?
To, to be honest with you, sir, I, I can't give you that information. I do not know. I know they're required to have a permit. Also, I know that they're required to have, um, identification from the business that they're employed with. Uh, but that would be, uh, to our Permits Department and the Police Department Chief, is that correct? Okay, I'll, I'll get back with you on that and let you know if it's required.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, uh, before I leave you guys, again, I, as I told you, I wanted to mention this one thing. Uh, because I'm not in the office a lot or all the time, I may not answer any questions, but as you can see, my, uh, email address is up here. Um, I respond to those properly because I have a phone on me all the time and I'm able to respond from my phone. So the best way to get in touch with me is through that email address. Uh, any questions, concerns, uh, any issues that you may have with my officers, which you shouldn't. Um, so any of that, just keep calling at me by email and I'll be glad to get back in touch with you all.
Thank you. Alright, thank y'all so much. Good afternoon, Chief Roberts and Captain Green are coming by. Uh, they both have been at, uh, previous... They both have been at previous meetings, but I know you all have the meeting scheduled, so I wanted to make sure that they had the opportunity to make a presentation for you all to ask your questions. So, next we're going to do a presentation from community development and we're going to switch over to those slides. And we are, they can't, can they, did we fix the audio once and for all? Just I'll say we're working on the audio, but you all might not be able to hear me yet. I'm going to bring up our director of community development, economic development, as well as our assistant director. Come on up. I thought we need, we need walk-on music, that's what we need.
Yes, yes.
This is a fear. All right, we'll pull up the slides.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Patrick GK and I'm the director for community and economic development department. And I would be today is.
Sheriff Brooks, I am the planning and zoning chief administrator for community and economic development.
We're trying to streamline the slideshow process. Back to basics.
While they're doing it, recently, county combined economic development department, or rather economic development office and the community development department. And so, we become one department. The beauty of doing that is when we are attracting businesses, we are able to talk about land use and zoning and land development process while we are talking to the community. The issue has always been that when we attract some businesses to the county, by the time they get here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Talk a little bit louder. Recently, county combined economic development office and community development department. The reason for that merger is to make sure that we are attracting and processing new businesses in the county. And we are also doing our best to retain the ones that are here. One of the benefits of that is that when we encounter new businesses, we can talk about the process comprehensively the first day that we met them. So, that's the reason why we are combined and that process is working out nicely. There have been a lot of projects we worked on and the merger has proven to be an asset.
So, good afternoon.
Hello.
Okay, I mean, I know it's morning, 12 o'clock, but good afternoon. Okay, that sounds a little bit better. Okay, so what we're going to do today is talk about projects. Projects in particularly in District One. And so, the first thing we're going to do is, like, please. As we're going to talk about the residential project. So, as you see, we have four major residential projects. One is under construction and three of those are coming up. It hasn't, we're in the process, they have been approved, these are all approved projects, so the ones that we go through, you'll see. Next slide, please. The first is Sonata. Sonata is, next slide, please. It's between O-Rex Row and Rex Row. If you see this, well, up here, up the street right here. And Sonata, if you're around this area, you know, you have seen it, it's under construction at this time currently. This is what it's looking like right now. If you are near the site, you will actually see the build-out homes. The next one is Yorkshire Town Homes. This, as you can see, this is, if you're right across the street from that Mount Zion Elementary School, as a radius to look at that. That is going to be 55 townhomes in that area. Next slide. And this is the, aesthetic of what is supposed to be once built out. The next one, if you see up here, you have Kingdom Hall, the Jehovah Witness. This is at 2631 Rex Row. This is the villages at Mount Zion. This is 40, also 43 townhomes in this particular development. If you look at this one, this is off Mount Zion. This particular development, if you're familiar, it had an approved commercial project, that was a gas station on the break end of it. But on the bottom half is a residential development. And this one will yield possibly 40 townhomes. And this is the aesthetic of it. Next slide. And the last residential project is actually single-family residential homes. This is six detached single-family residential homes. This is Conley Circle, Highway 42. And this is what should have been, like, once it's built out. This is six, only six detached single-family residential houses. The next group of projects we're looking at are commercial projects. If you're familiar, we have two fire stations coming online, a car wash, a gas station for retail, and a new hotel and special event center, but we'll go through these projects. Three of those are under construction currently and two of them are still in the zone. They have been approved, but they're still going through the process. The first one is fire station number two. This is between Rex Row and, it continues. And as you can see, the layout, you can see how it would look once it's built out. And the other one, if you have been in this area, depending on where you came in it today, you would have saw fire station 15 being up, going vertical, so you saw that if you passed through on Harper Road outside of here. And this is, as you can see, they're in the building process. The next one, you know what skate zone is, and I'm pretty sure if you're in District One, you know what that skate zone is. You have the new car wash, it's going to be built right next to it. Next slide, please. Next slide. This is what is going to be coming online. This car wash is actually just was approved through the DRC process, which is technical review committee. So, this one should be coming vertical fairly soon. Next slide, please. The next project is, it's already a convenience store here. Next slide. And this is Mount Zion, if you remember, it's already a convenience store, they're remodeling it and actually coming back with a different kind of aesthetic to it. And this is how it's supposed to look once it's been, it's built out. Now, if you're on Elbow Block, Elbow Block Road, you know where the warehouse is on Elbow Block. If you come around that curve, where Wal-Mart is, come around that curve, you'll see the hotel and a big center. Next slide, please. There's going to be built out, if you come down that road, you'll get to the recreation center, but, next slide. This is some of the aesthetics of that building. Next slide. And now let's talk about industrial projects. We have five industrial projects coming online. Most of these are either in partial construction or they're under construction. The only one is one that's on Highway 42 that is still, isn't approved, it's just recently been approved, so you won't see it. Let's talk about. Project Chill, this is, actually, if you're on Elbow Block, if you go down, it's an industrial center that sits behind it. And that's where this particular project is, the warehouse, it's a cold storage facility, and they did expansion there. Next slide, please. If you look on the right-hand side, you can kind of see what some of the aesthetics of it is going to be once it's revitalized and actually put on site. Okay, the next one is the data center. The data center is from off of Elbow Block. Williamson Road, if you see on the right-hand side, come on there. Right now, they have, have a building permit for more of their substation aspects, but not the building in itself yet. This is how it looks on the site. And this is pretty much how the building looks from the row, from Tanner, East Tanner Church Row. The trailer storage and repair center is on Elbow Block. So, if anyone is familiar with District One, you have one side of District One, when you're going towards the Wal-Mart, that has a lot more of the commercial side of it, but if you go on the opposite side of Elbow Block, it's an industrial area and most of the development over in that area is industrial. This is where, is one of those places where it has industrial, you know where the racetrack is on that other side. It's right by there, right next, across from that, and that's a trailer storage and repair service. Next slide. And this is where it's going to look out for the site plan side. Next slide, please. And this is the aesthetics of that particular building. And I wanted to put it in context because a lot of people say, wow, it's industrial. But the whole corridor right there in that little area is industrial. Next slide. The next area, next slide, please. It's for renovation project, it's a truck repair and dispatching. This corner has, if you go across from it, it's a gas station. If you go on the other side of it, it's a gas station. So, if you look here and here, those two corner, our gas station's right there and then this right here is a truck repair and dispatch area. Next slide, please. Currently on the site, if you look at the left, this is what it looks like. On the right-hand side is what they are trying to turn it into. So, they are improving the site and making it aesthetically pleasing on that particular site. Here's a better view of that particular site. And then we have the QuickTrip Way. QuickTrip already had this building previously. They're doing an expansion to allow for more services at that location. So, they put in for continued services where they're expanding. This is what the site plan would look like. Next slide, please. And this is some of the aesthetics. They already have an existing building, they're doing more remodeling on the internal side more than the external. And I believe that is the last slide for industrial side. All right, so I will entertain any questions as it relates to this particular, for these projects. If you are, have any questions about, you see something going up or a building in your area, please let us know if you can get that information. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the townhouses that are going up, are they, I mean, just rental or do the people have a chance to own them?
Those are piece of townhomes in those areas.
Which, which townhomes? Can you specify which townhomes? I know that.
All of them. Is anybody?
No, those, all the townhomes that I showed in this presentation are piece of, so they're ownership-based townhomes.
So, the person living there can own it?
Yes, those are, they're, they're getting sold to own for ownership purposes.
Okay, to individuals?
Correct.
And the next question is. There's a project going up on 42 at the end of O-Rex Mall Road, that temple?
Is it, is that near the Reynolds Nature Preserve?
No, ma'am, this is on.
42 at the.
42, better known as Moreland Avenue. Okay, and.
You're talking about the one that's right across the street from the, if you go down.
That is the, they don't have a flower shop right there.
Lawrence Flower Shop owns that and the people that bought it were.
Wait a minute, I'm not doing my question.
Yes.
I don't need them. The history, I don't need that. But.
I can look into that project for you.
That Moreland Avenue is already, it's like the, the just-in-case street when the expressway is backed up. There's accident, they say take 23, 42, whatever. But now, we have this big complex, I guess it's going to be rental temporarily. All they do is rent. And we're going to have, probably have a light right there at O-Rex and 42, whereas the traffic used to flow, now we're going to have to stop right there.
I'm familiar with the project, I cannot think of what exactly.
Isn't that a district word?
But I can get that to you.
That's, that's backing up to the QuickTrip.
Yeah, I know that's the way you were, what you're talking about. It's Templar is the developer, but Templar has multiple projects, so I have to look and see which one.
And then there was a bus stop right, right there, they took the bus stop away.
Yeah, I'm familiar, but I can get to that information offline.
You don't have to get it to me.
No, I can get that information for you. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have a question. My question is, are we looking to bring any more service station into the vicinity of Clayton County? I think we are just about. You know, I didn't think, if I get by the gas, I don't have to walk a long distance to get to gas, you know? Every corner got a gas station. Do we have another bigger, other than QuickTrip racetrack, Moms and Pops service station? Even though we could bring that into it, but it look like we are flooding out our community with service stations.
The number of things that are, are happening, we all agree, we have enough gas stations in the county. Plenty of them. So, the problem we have that we are fixing is our zoning. That's why we are doing a zoning rewrite. Zoning controls most of what we do. We have implemented a policy that, a saturation policy, that means if you come with a gas station and the property is properly zoned for it, when something is zoned for something, it's hard for us to signal. But what we implemented as policy is, how far is it from the next gas station? With that, we can use the saturation reason to deny it. You cannot have too many gas stations in one place. There's also another aspect of our code. If you are applying for a gas station of any kind, you have to go through a conditional requirement, which makes it possible for everyone in that vicinity to know that it's coming and protest it and come to the board meeting. So, we have ways of doing it. For example, like before, I have a section where I will talk about rezoning. We are rewriting our zoning code for one reason. The things that we desire in the county, we cannot quite get with the zoning code the way it is right now. Our new zoning code will accomplish a lot of things. We have accomplished redoing our comprehensive plan and land use last year. So, we are working on the zoning code as we speak. The zoning code process is happening. What I want to add to you is, please show up. Your voice is matter. Your ideas matter. We don't want to design the new zoning code in a vacuum. Not in our offices. We want to hear from folks who live in different neighborhoods. What actually are they seeing? What do they need? What do they want? And we'll figure out a way, how to consider all that and put it in our code. The plan is to change the aesthetics of Clayton County. The plan is to bring economic development to. The plan is to bring economic development to Clayton County. The plan is to bring living wages to the jobs that are coming to Clayton County. So you can see what this code about to allow us to do. So that is my answer in broad way to tell you about what we are doing. And no, gas stations, if you don't meet, although you're zoned, but if we deem it to be a saturation in the area, we're gonna recommend a denial. Yes ma'am?
Uh, it's actually, Mari, Ms. Colani, did you get your question?
Uh, I'm, I'm, one more second. Can you announce what they, the community development, economic development have their meetings so that we would know? I would also go to website, but I think you asked my question. But you did the question that was going to be my next. Are you all looking to amend the zoning ordinance? And I want to attend those, before I was my head.
Yeah, look at those, as the, and two of, the initial two meetings have happened. There are two extra, two more coming on the eleventh of this month. At Sixty-Eight, at Flint River, at Flint River Community Center, uh, on Flint, on Flint River Road, One Fifty-Three Flint River Road. And the next one will be on the thirteenth, at Sixty-Eight also, uh, the Kinyabot Gray, the Christian Center, for Seventy-Five East Thirty-Broad. Okay, this is not the only meeting, this is the shall be to hear from the citizens. I will tell you that, we are not showing up for these meetings. The first two, in my estimation, should not have happened the way you have. I'm asking myself, what can we do extra? To tell folks, you can control what happens in your neighborhood. Why are we not coming out? I'm hoping the one on the eleventh should be a packed house. We are advertising it, the consultant is advertising it. One of these days, I will put on a suit and step on the street. Invite people to this meeting.
That's what I'm leaving.
Yes ma'am?
Have you ever thought about location? Maybe it's the location that is not friendly for those constituents that can't get to Flint River. Why don't you just move it to our district? To a different area?
We did, we...
Okay, I see, I'm just asking a question.
We, we, I agree. That's what we did. We took it to each district so that it's easier for folks to get. But remember, this is round one. But more importantly, if you go to our website, you can still tell us what you want. Because the consultant is checking the website and getting information. I can't go to the commissioners to say, this is what we want to do in the county. With the citizens' voice being heard. That is my back-up. If we don't do this, it's hard to say to the commissioners, this is what our folks are saying. That's the plan. Ma'am?
Oh, actually, oh, I just, I wanna make sure that we go in order.
In order, okay.
And I did wanna address two things for Ms. Colani. Uh, when Director GK was talking about additional, conditional, goodness, yes, the CUPs. So what that means, for folks who are just not as familiar with the zoning process, that means that that decision has to come before the Board of Commissioners. And so if there were any additional gas stations that were to be approved, it would have to come before the board. As far as development goes, there are some developments that are under permitted uses or they are by right developments. And so they can come to the community development office. They can put in an application and request a license and it can be approved as long as they are listed under the permitted uses. But gas stations do not fall under that category, which means there is no gas station in this county that can be, that can begin construction unless it comes before the board. And I don't believe there have been any gas stations that have come before the board this year. I know the one that came up in District One off Mount Zion, it was not denied because they went through their application because I told them that I would, I refuse to admit another gas station in Clayton County. Alright, so we're gonna go to Mari, Ms. Kim, Ms. Panzi? Ms. Panzi and then one more here.
So one of my questions is in regards to one of the projects that you mentioned, which was the hotel on Evans Block. That particular project, our community have been talking with that developer several times and they were stating that they were still getting, they get their building plans approved and then also, they were still figuring out financing because they did not have the finances to even finance that project. But I see that you see, I see that it's being promoted, that it's being, that it's coming soon and it's approved. Yes, it's approved by zoning, but what is the timeline of that particular project? Because from my understanding, finances was a huge issue for that project to even be done.
Uh, thank you for the question. We don't deal with the timing of projects. As you can, as you know, the financing part of the project, we don't get involved with. Uh, so they, they will start when they are financing together. In terms of the building permits, I believe that the building permits, the building review only permits have been approved or in the process of being approved. So, um, we don't tell them when to start their construction. It's when they are ready. Uh, another thing is that, from when they are approved, there is a time lapse in the code that we can start executing as to, but we usually wait till that time elapses to see if they must start construction on that. And we are careful and intentional when we do that so that we don't just roll back zoning or approval of the board. There is a process of doing that. But for right now, I can only answer a question of the building sign. Our building permit process flows real quick so that, I will say to you, the building is not the issue. It has to be the financing part.
Uh, I do have a second part though. So there's another project that was not presented that is actually underway on Evans Block as well. That's right beside the Waffle House, which is the Madison Tire Shop. And so with that particular project, when that particular developer came, they presented with doing not only the Madison Tire Shop, but also a coffee shop and a medical center altogether. They, then after they got approved, they did not wanna go through with the coffee shop and the medical center, but now they are still doing the Madison Tire Shop. From my understanding, when the last previous commissioner was here, she halted that particular project because of their not being truthful and how they were proceeding with the community with that particular project. But now I see that it's still underway and it's almost going to the finalize, the finalizing of that project being completed. But I see it wasn't presented. So I wanted to get more of an update on that particular project since they are building it.
Uh, the level of detail I'll give you is that, when financing was reason why the first one didn't go through. The developer, um, wasn't able to pull off the project the way they planned, the way he came to the Board of Commissioners. I believe that they came there and redid the plan to build just the tire shop. But I would, like I said, the details, I have to look into. But that project has been around for about two years. So I have to kind of extract, to dig up all that happened and be able to report to you with some more details.
Ms. Kim, Ms. Panzi?
Yes, I have a question and part of it I think you just answered. Bridgeway Heights on Rex Road and Evans Drive, that was sold and bought a church and purchased a few years ago and there still has been no development on it. So, and I had proposed, given the idea, why doesn't the school buy it? And turn it into an agricultural center for teaching agriculture to students and have like more of the community garden, the biosciences, right? That didn't happen. But if they were to change the zoning to agricultural, what would Bridgeway Heights have to do then?
Uh, it depends on what they bring into us. If, if they're changing to agricultural, then our code specifies all that can be done under agriculture.
So they would have to sell the property at that point if the zoning was changed, is that correct?
I don't get it to the financial bank or do this.
Next question is, why aren't we building so many townhomes? And I think already another answer is the tax revenue, right? However, but instead of starting homes or smaller subdivisions, because this produces a lot of traffic and we don't have a road or the schools to substantiate, if those are younger families, to substantiate that population growth at that rate. Why are we doing that? Because Mount Zion Elementary was, I'm not sure, I may be speaking out of turn, overpopulated, right? Those schools, and so in my mind, I'm thinking, why are we doing that?
Okay, thank you for the question, an interesting question. This is one of the reasons why we are...
Take a little loud some parts here. And into the mic so that our participants on Zoom can hear.
This is one of the reasons why we are redoing our zoning code.
I can hear that part, what part?
Well, we are redo, we rewriting our zoning code. This is one of the reasons. Um, the reasons are, when you look at how the county developed over the years, it is unusual pattern. Um, our Department of Environmental Commission is projecting a population increase in our county. We all agree that we need to do something about affordable housing, about housing in general. We don't, we don't have the middle housing. So what I'm doing is waiting for the zoning update to happen to really take a good look. What are the issues we have? So that we can write our code to make sure that we are promoting our county for economic development. So that is why you're saying, we recognize what you recognize. That's the reason for the zoning code rewrite. Yes ma'am?
We, I, I'm a little disgruntled with that answer because I disagree that with the, the level of intelligence that is presented from your department, within your department, that you would not anticipate based on the zoning on multifamily dwelling, that that would have occurred to begin with. So why didn't you write it to begin with?
Well, the zoning code was approved. The latest zoning code we are using was approved, was adopted in two thousand and eight. We have done subsequent updates, means going to commissioners with conditions. When you do improvement and have six conditions, what it says is that your code is deficient. You shouldn't have that many conditions on, on, on projects. So it's not an issue of a whole lot of things needs to be fixed. And since when it was written, as you can tell, the county has changed. The metro has changed. So, so what we're doing now is, we're trying to play fast catch-up.
What are the redevelopment?
Ma'am, if you don't mind, let me get to some other folks.
One really important question. We're, we're, we're running, we're running...
Economic development.
But we're running, I'm sorry, we are running behind on, on time and I know that a couple of folks had double questions. Uh, we can take one, two, three questions and then we have to move on to zoning because I wanna make sure that we have enough time for our transportation and development. It sounds like we need to have a whole dedicated, let's just talk about zoning. We ha, I had one in September and we can have one of those again and we can get really deep into the weeds on zoning. Or Ms. Panzi?
Oh, me?
Um, my question is, I see that there's a lot of going on with the housing, greatly different housing. But what are we doing in this county about this, how is our home population? Because all of these, um, housing developments that you show, show today were townhomes for people who had means to afford them. And I'm just wondering, like, what are we gonna do with the people that are homeless? Because you just said, we're gonna be expecting more people. And when you have more people, you have more people at different ranges of income. How, what do we listen to about that?
I can take that question because the Board of Commissioners we just approved, up to seven hundred and eighty thousand in local commissioner assistance grants that did go to numerous nonprofit organizations here in Clayton County. And there were organizations on that list who, who are solely dedicated to providing housing, whether that's providing funds to help with eviction mitigation and, and help people to stay in their homes so that they do not become homeless, as well as organizations that assist with transitional housing. And I know there was one organization on there that I, I know specifically also assists with individuals who are sleeping in encampments. And so, you know, there is a diversity of those organizations that have provided immediate current support to every level of individuals' home housing situations. I, I hope that, I hope that answers your question right here in the... Oh, I'm sorry, I forget your name, hey, but...
Hey, Asher Galloway. I have a quick question. This is GK, you mentioned that, uh, they have these meetings that they don't see a lot of people. And what can you do to get the information out? Is there an objection to getting that information out via cell phone calling card?
Well, the, the consultant is trying, um, uh, social media, where everybody gets information on their phone. Uh, they have, they're doing that, the first meeting, there was an issue with doing that, but that was corrected. By the time we went to the second, and we going to see how this one turns out. But they're going social media because everybody gets information on their cell phone. Yeah.
But, uh, Mr. McGee is for the, actually, can we switch files?
Hello, much better. You always should have given me this one after someone you gave to the chief of police. Yes sir?
He's just sitting here to make me behave. Uh, Director GK addressing townhomes, which in my, in my mind, is nothing more than a glorified apartment. But with that being said, they put up these fee simple homes, fee simple with, with conditions say that only five percent, two percent, or no rentals enter. Are you, are you following me so far?
Yes.
Okay. What department and who is responsible for keeping up with each one of those townhomes being state staying within that criteria of, of five percent, ten percent, or no rentals? What department is responsible and who is responsible for that? Keep it up with it.
Okay.
On slow.
Talk slow and fast, okay? The initial responsibility to get that done cannot be on the county. It's almost impossible. Where it starts, if you go check, most of those have homeowner associations. They have registered homeowners association where they actually track it. Then when they report that to us, it becomes a code enforcement issue. So, the county gets involved when they not doing what they're supposed to do. Uh, recently, the thing you're referring to might have been a year or two ago, we don't do that anymore. All fee simple townhomes are for purchase, not rental. Because you cannot do the, this is the issue. When those things were happening sometimes, there was a mixture of terms. When those things were happening sometimes, there was a mixture of terms. We are talking, um, apartment homes and things like that. Now, if you build a fee simple, the initial sale must be from the developer to an individual. Because when you buy a townhome, you buy the building and the lot, the little lots in the front and in the back. That will make you fee simple. So you actually buying land. When you're renting, you're not buying land. You only rented the four walls of your building. So i- initial, back to your question. Initial policy is when the homeowners, because they don't know when the renter's moving and when folks actually buy the last. In the, in the areas where it was stipulated, it has to be so many to be there. So that's how we do it. The county gets involved when the complaints start coming. At that moment, what the plan said.
Mr. Director of GK, with, with your explanation there, what I've heard, because I go to commissioner meetings and I hear people complaining that they don't have a homeowners association and they can't get one started. Uh, who then is responsible for the rental prop, they so-called overabundance of rentals rather than owner care?
Mr. McGee, that, that is a great question. So part of that actually has to do with state laws. So here it, because what I'm hearing is, uh, what would be helpful for us as a county to keep track of how many, let's say, single-family houses or even, um, particular units and townhouses are rentals? Would be a rental registry. However, in Georgia, there is a law that says that counties, counties and cities cannot create a rental registry. So we can, we are prohibited and not allowed to keep a list of how many, let's say, individual, single-family houses, units within townhome communities or even condominiums, um, are actually rentals. Now, I will say that the, um, House ATL had their quarterly convening just a few days ago and one of their state legislative priorities is to move forward with a rental registry. But that is a decision that must be made at the state legislative level down at the, down at the Capitol. So, uh, that, their session starts in January, you should, you should go talk to them as well.
Commissioner Reeves, with that statement being said, I see Clayton County condemned to being a slum area. Thank you.
That's, that's, that's not true. We, we are overtime for, um, for, for this presentation. I believe that you all were going to talk briefly about the zoning rewrites you never got to hear from transportation. And mine is about zoning rewrite. Okay. So you all have a presentation on yourself.
Ms., Ms. Brenda?
Yes. Yeah, my question was for Patrick. You've spoken a lot about the zoning rewrite.
Yes, ma'am.
And you shared with us your anticipated completion of the zoning rewrite.
Early 2027.
Exactly, two years from now.
Now, now by two, because this year is almost done. Now by two, this year is, is almost done, early 2027. Uh, there are some other things coming down the pipe. How we going to implement that code? Not wait until all of it is done. We going to implement them. Uh, we have made final decision, residential or non-residential force could be adopted. Because we have to be bear in mind that we don't want to stop activities in the county while we are doing this. So it's, it's coming.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I saw, can you guys see the timeline? That's okay. I saw that there was an element talking about code development with respect to enforcement and blighted properties, right? That may not fit the line, particularly properties are grandfathered in that don't necessarily meet the need. What are some thoughts that are in place to make sure that properties are being elevated to meet, to meet code at times?
Code development that you see there is not an association with code enforcement. It's when they take all the information they hear. They're going to interview all the commissioners, that's one on one. Once they finish all that they are collecting, the code development is when they craft our code. That's when they start developing the code, the language and what it's going to do. But in terms of what the question you asked, yes, once you have a new code, you're going to have areas where you have what we call legal non-conforming structures. So when we get there, if they want to, if you have an existing use and don't have, it is, um, it's not discontinued, you can stay that way. But if, for some reason, that particular use, that is illegal, non-conforming use is discontinued, you must comply with the new rules. So that is how that we are looking at it. Yeah. But the code, um, the code development is really more of how they are constructing our new code. Ms. Brooks going to go through a little bit of, uh, what we have. Um, as you can tell, before she come get the mic, as you can tell, we started with an initiation discovery and the work has started already. The work has started already.
So, next slide please. The first thing we're involved with is the project team. We are the county. Um, then we have our project management that is through Sides4. Sides4 is also managing this project. We have the attorneys that are working on the zoning code, um, development aspects of it. And then we have community engagement, which is Sycamore Consulting, who is, uh, is the one who's going to work on all the engagement with the county and communications. Next slide please. So what is the zoning rewrite? So this is different from a zoning update. As Director of GK stated, we're not making updates to the code. We see that there's a lot of conflict, so we're completely rewriting our code. That means we're trying to ensure legal compliance to it. And some of the things that you might see is revising the zoning categories and standards, also like parking standards, signage and development standards as well. Next slide please. So what is the difference between lay use policy versus zoning? So as we mentioned before, we did a comprehensive, the county did a comprehensive plan update. From that, those are your policies, where do you want the county to go? How, how is the county trending? We looked at all of the different departments, we talked to them. We have meetings that we set up, as well as we talked to the commissioners to what they wanted to see in their districts, as well as looking at all of the plans in the county and the metro, and then we created the comprehensive plan. We tried to tie it all together to make sure that it's cohesive and it makes sense to move the county forward. Now, those are your policies, that's where you're trying to go. That's where the future of Clayton County is, but how do you get there? That is where the zoning comes in. The co, the zoning is the legal art of that. It helps to influence that policy to make it happen. That is why we're doing the zoning rewrite in order to ensure that if we're saying that we want the county to be as easy, as easily pleasing, if we want to see different housing options, if we wanted to see different parks and things of that nature, how do we accomplish that through the zoning aspects? Next slide please. So what are some of the project deliverables? So in our new zoning rewrite, we hope to accomplish, give you a general provision, making sure that you understand why we have a zoning ordinance. You want to talk about the zoning districts, what kind of district do we have? So you might see new ones, like is it residential, commercial, industrial? But you're also going to have use standards. So what can you do with that particular zoning classification? Another thing you'll see is development standards. What are your setbacks? How far off can I build my garage? And also design standards. So when you're talking about, hey, I want to make sure that we have architectural features on houses or commercial buildings, that's where your design standards come from. We want to have administration and procedures that make sense. When you're trying to rezoning or you're trying to move through a permitting process, how can we make sure it's efficient and move seamlessly? And then your non-conformity. Anytime you change a code, it's going to cause some kind of non-conformity. But how do you handle those non-conformities? So that you should see that. And then we want to have definitions and measurable. We want to make sure that everything is clearly defined and also how do you measure what you're extending? Next slide please. One of the key things that we also want to do in our new zoning, uh, rewrite is make sure that not just to have all this language that people don't understand, but have pictures or graphics that goes towards helping you to see what it is. So if we're saying, hey, if we want to see eight-foot trees by a commercial building, how does that look? What does that look like? If I'm saying, hey, you need 10 feet before you build your house, then what does that look like? So give it graphic so the layperson can understand, like, this is what that means. Next slide please. So where to go? The goal is to modernize it, to align it with the movement, Clayford movement. To be clear, make it simple. Sometimes you read the code, you're like, I got to read it five times to understand what it meant the first time. Um, how does, we want to address those contradictions where one part of the code says this, another part of the code says that. We want to support economic development. So how do you develop a code that will be, um, economically driven? Um, we want to address housing goals. I hear a lot of people say, hey, how do you address different, um, missing housing and things of that nature? So we want to address this in this code. We want to enable equity and sustainable growth. So not just having different codes, but how can we sustain those codes? And then also, this is not just an in a vacuum kind of goal. We want to hear from the citizens, the people that live in the area. What are the goals? If we're missing something on here, what those goals are that we need to add to this? Because we cannot do it by ourselves. We need the help of everyone who lives, that knows, that knows their area. Next slide please. So as we went over the project timeline, we have, uh, started the project. We're having initial diagnostic review soon. However, it won't be completed until 2027. And that, that seems so far away, but look, we're already in November of 2025. That means we're already in 2026. And this is early 2027. So in a country, in the big grand scheme of things, it's a short amount of time to do a lot of work. Next slide please. So community engagement, anything you read has already happened. But I want to put this out there because as Director of GK said, we have many opportunities through 2026 and 2027 to engage. This is more so of the board side of things as far as engagement. But if you go to the next slide please. You'll see that we also did community engagement as well. So also, everybody, if you look in here, we see that it's engagement that we already have done. But in 2027, we're going to have a whole nother series of engagement. And you say, okay, well, that's 2027, what about 2026? If you go to the bottom, you see pop-up events. We want, we don't want to just do meetings. We want to go where individuals are. Because a lot of time, you might not be able to come to a meeting. So we want to go where we see a lot of people are. So throughout 2026, you might see us pop up at events to let you know and to gather more information and reference to it. So we're going to be very active into the community. So we really want to hear from you. Next slide please. So two things to be very well up that we put in the back of the, of our, um, of the auditorium. The first one is the meeting dates. We have a list of meeting dates, but we also have on our website the zoning, uh, rewrite website. So if you click on that, you can also stay up to date as well. And then the second thing is, if you want or have any kind of things or suggestions in relation to our zoning code update, please reach out to our office. Or we also have some, uh, comment forms in the back where you can literally write it down and you can hand it to us after this meeting and we will collect that as well.
Please understand that the issues we are trying to solve, they don't happen in one day. The plans that we have are working. We are re-engaged in the metro. Most of you might not know this, one of our latest plans, just won an award at Atlanta Regional Commission. If you go to the Board of Commissioners website, you will see where Clayton County was called to the stage, where the whole metro. That wa, that is our plan that we're doing. The plan is to continue on that trajectory. The plan, I'm urging everybody to have patience. What you're seeing, they happen in one night. We will correct this. We will be a much better county.
Thank you so much for, for that presentation. I know, I know y'all have questions. Y'all were at the zoning rewrite meeting at the, the, uh, the Senior Center. We're going to move on to, uh, transportation and development. Thank you all so much, uh, for, for that presentation. I also want to add, uh, all the concerns that, that folks are bringing up around beautification, around people wanting to see more sidewalks, talking about missing middle housing and what types of housing we have, whether it's townhouses or condos or, uh, single-family. All of those things are going to be captured within the zoning rewrite. And so I highly recommend when you're coming out to those meetings, maybe even make a list of what are some of the things that have priorities to you. It doesn't mean that you necessarily have to know the language in the, in the zoning, about setbacks or about non-imperious surfaces. Just think about what you want to see. And actually, I really hope you all enjoy the housing interactive study that we're going to have a little bit later because, um, I do want to hear what type of housing you all want to see. But, uh, I know there had been some questions about transportation, about the roads, about the status of construction projects. And in addition to Clayton County, um, undergoing a rewrite of our entire zoning ordinance, there's also, but I believe is a very exciting plan around what is transportation in Clayton County going to look like. So, uh, when we talk about the increase in, um, the increase in population, I think it's expected Clayton County is projected to go somewhere up to maybe 500,000, uh, residents. And by the year 2050, we are already at 300,000 residents. We are part of the main, the main, the, goodness, the five counties within metropolitan Atlanta. And so we should not be surprised that growth is coming to Clayton County. But it's also incredibly important for us to plan what that growth looks like and to hear from the people who are already here. So when we talk about traffic, that's where transportation comes in. And I'll kick it over to our director.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name's Jeff. My name's Jeff Matarco. I'm the Director of Transportation Development here for the county. Um, today, we wanted to speak to you about initiative that's just kicking off in the county. Um, yes, you just heard a lot about some planning efforts here at planning and zoning department. Well, one of the efforts that we have to do in our transportation department is what we call a comprehensive transportation plan. And here today, I have representatives from our consulting team here to tell you about the process that the county's just diving into. Um, one little quick tidbit before I pass on the mic. Uh, this is the grassroots effort at the community level that we have to do. And if all the outcome of this plan fits into the regional plan for the Atlanta Metropolitan area that's managed through the Atlanta Regional Commission. This is the area where we have to identify projects we want in order to go compete with others in the metro area, at the state level and the federal level for transportation dollars that come into the county. So this is a pretty important planning aspect that we have to do to have our seat at the table to get other money to come into the county. By this time, I'm going to pass it off to Kat Ornoor and Nicole Williams from the consulting team who are getting ready to do this study for the citizens of the county.
So we're going to walk you through, um, a little bit about our project. Um, and then really what we're focusing on, as Jeff mentioned, we're really just kicking off our process. Um, we've been last month or so getting things in order on a data side and figuring out our engagement process and all of that. So, uh, Nicole Williams, who's here with me, is really going to be talking a lot about what we're hoping to get out of the engagement and what you can expect, um, to, to see on the public side of this project. Go to the next slide. Um, so what is a comprehensive plan? Uh, as Jeff mentioned a little bit, this is really a... this is really a full multimodal work plan that the county will use to guide their project investments over particularly the next five years, but really the long term beyond that. So thinking about your sort of short, medium, and long term, where are those transportation investments going to go? Um, I will say, you know, I want to emphasize the word multimodal in the slide up here. There's been a lot of talk about transit specifically in Clayton County over the past several years. And that's awesome. We know that there's a lot of great services coming for Clayton County. And really, this is the opportunity to look more broadly at transportation. So we're looking at, um, roads, maintenance, freight conflicts, walking, biking, trails, all of these different things that go into the way that you all get around on a day-to-day basis, get to school, get to work, get home, go shopping, do all the things that you need to do. How can those things be better in Clayton County overall? Um, this comprehensive transportation plan is a little bit unique in that instead of just a comprehensive transportation plan, there's a couple of other key deliverables as part of it. So the comprehensive transportation plan will be supplemented by a trail plan. So really looking countywide at the trail opportunities and priorities. And then a safety action plan. So there's been a big push at the national level recently to prioritize safety, and particularly reducing crashes that result in fatalities and serious injuries. Uh, these are really unacceptable on our roadways. And there's been a big push in funding and education to try to figure out how do we reduce those crashes, so we have fewer people dying on our roadways every year. So there's a handful of sort of things that will be checking off to, to make this qualify as a safety action plan. That will also help Clayton County be eligible for future federal funding opportunities. We go to the next slide. So we are on a similar timeline, actually, as the zoning rewrites. We just kicked off our process this fall. We'll be doing community engagement really over the course of this whole project, with the inventory and assessment wrapping up in early next year. And then moving directly into our recommendations and our final plan development phases, um, with a estimated completion date of early 2027. So you'll see lots of meetings and communication about this over the next year or so. Go to the next slide. Um, just a few kind of key considerations that we've identified so far through conversations and through some data analysis. Um, we understand that economic development is really important in Clayton County. And transportation is a big part of taking steps toward economic development. So understanding every dollar that is spent on transportation needs to be also considered for how does that contribute to economic development goals. Uh, we also know there's a focus on connecting people to jobs and employment centers. So, you know, a lot of people who take transit to work. How do we get people to transit more safely and more easily? How do we get people to and from work to really help people thrive in their day-to-day lives? Again, a focus on safety. So I mentioned that safety action plan, that's going to be a big push as part of this transportation study. I also mentioned that the topic's been a lot of talk on transit recently. And we definitely want to keep that conversation going. But we want to fold in all of the other modes as well, to make sure that we're looking at a full, comprehensive look of how we get around Clayton County. Um, and then, piggybacking off of what Cheryl and Patrick were talking about, we know that the county has recently completed their comprehensive plan. They're launching this zoning rewrite. Those things influence the way we move around the county as well. So really looking at the priorities that came out of those, and understanding how does that impact what we're doing on the transportation side? Next slide. So with that, I'm gonna pass it over to Nicole to talk more about our engagement program.
Alright, so my name is Nicole Williams. I am the Senior Manager of Strategic Planning and Engagement for the Galacta Farm. And so we will be handling the engagement portion of this project. Alright, so, uh, we usually go with four pillars. We want to educate, engage, inform, and empower, um, the community. We want to provide clear project information to you guys, build two-way dialogue with our stakeholders, maintain transparent updates throughout the process, and of course, create meaningful opportunities for decision-making. So ensuring that the community's voices are heard. Alright, so I kind of, that's kind of what I went over. Building meaningful relationships with the residents, civic leaders, and community organizations to ensure consistent and trusted communication. We want to encourage inclusive participation. Um, by intentionally engaging the populations that have been historically underserved. Um, translate complex transportation and planning concepts into clear and relatable information. And they give us a fact sheet, so you guys kind of can have some different facts about the project as well. Um, document, analyze, and present community input through reports that reflect the voices of Clayton County residents. The engagement tools and opportunities that we use. Um, the community council, which will be a, um, is composed of residents, business owners, and local leaders who represent the county. Uh, we'll have a technical advisory committee. That includes the elected officials, transportation professionals, and regional partners who provide policy and technical expertise. So that way, you will know that you're being represented well. Um, and we have surveys and focus groups. So online and printed surveys along with targeted focus groups allow for a wide range of input from residents, business owners, and community organizations. We will have public meetings throughout this process. So we'll have two series of meetings. There will be six meetings total. Um, each round of meetings will have three meetings in each. And that is where you guys will have an opportunity. Um, that we have a website and things like that, where you will be able to find updates of when these meetings will be. Um, you will have the opportunity to share ideas, identify safety concerns, and review proposed improvements. We will also have pop-up meetings. And our pop-up meetings usually serve as a strategic effort to, um, inform the community and inform the public before we have public meetings. So everyone will kind of be in the know. So some of the events that are going on in Clayton County, we will pop up at that event. We'll have an informational table out there. And we'll be updating the community throughout the process on when our next, uh, public meeting or informational will be held. So we will be giving you updates along with the process. Alright, stay connected throughout the process. Alright, so you will have a, we'll have a project website that will have updates, documents, feedback opportunities. We'll be having email blasts that will go out, social media and outreach events. And also, we'll have public meetings and documentation of all input recorded. Um, track and share it transparently, okay? And if you would, you can scan the QR code. And I'm gonna give a basic K and shit to you.
Sure, so that QR code is for our website, which is also, the link is on your fact sheet. So if you are not a QR code user, feel free to use that, or get it on when you get home. Um, we have some initial project information on there. Essentially, a lot of the same things we've shared with you today. One thing I will point out is, we have our Get Involved page on the website. Has an email sign up. So if you would like to be on that list for our email blasts, so that you are getting notifications about upcoming meetings and important project milestones, please do sign up, give us your email, and we'll make sure you stay informed throughout the process. Any questions, Randy?
Okay, I have a few questions. This to anybody on the transportation. Uh, I know it's traffic lights at the intersections of, what's that? Uh, Elmore to Forest Park Place and Bowa Crest. And I'm thinking maybe there's one at Bowa Crest and Alba Block. Are those gonna be, um, for ticketing purposes? Or are you just watching the traffic?
There's a lot of technology that goes into traffic signals. Um, they're not here to break green and yellows anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry, I made cameras.
Yes, Emily. The, a part of the traffic signals, there's a, what we call a detection zone that detects if a vehicle's there waiting on the traffic signal. And the new technology, I say new, it's been around 20, 25 years. Um, this county is one of the leaders of metropolitan Atlanta area. Our team will put a camera, or an infrared, or a microwave wave device to sense a vehicle's presence. The old way of doing it is putting some electrical wire in the ground, uh, to sense a vehicle. So we have cameras at almost all the traffic signals in one shape or form around the county. Um, the cameras are, these types of cameras are not to issue tickets for running red lights. Um, they're not for surveillance necessarily. They are to detect vehicles. Um, they're not an item where a camera can be panned around, tilted, or zoomed. Those are the ones you mainly are seeing. Now, in addition to that, the county through the transportation department has about 150-ish surveillance cameras that we can move around. And those are ones that we look at in real time to make sure if traffic is backing up in a certain location, can we change the signal timing right then and there to alleviate some of that congestion? There's cameras, the police department can view theirs when they have the appropriate staffing to view them. Um, but they're not anything that issue red light cameras or anything like that. They're, they're purely for surveillance.
I have another question about, um, uh, ground transportation lately. I've always said that District One should have got a lot like Riverdale and Jones Road, which is underused. And then we have one way out on 138, which basically serves Stockbridge. And they get on and catch the bus. But there's nothing in District One that could connect the people to go to work downtown and come back out here without having to deal with the traffic or jumping on water. Is there, uh, maybe a conversation we can have with the state to get us a lot? Because I know, uh, on Panola and, what's that, Manola out there, I-20, they got a lot late after everybody had built their lives.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, and absolutely, this is an opportunity to be thinking about transit. Transit's a little bit unique in that it's sort of the mode that Clayton County has a little bit less hands-on control over compared to what it does on its local roads, or trails, or that sort of thing. But this is the perfect opportunity to be identifying what those priorities are, so that the county can have those conversations with the ATL and transit service providers. So that will absolutely be useful feedback. Thank you.
Alright, Ms. Um, Ms. Vicki, I know you, you mentioned Greta, the Georgia Regional, um, Transit Association. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood. Uh, she's talking about the park and, uh, the parking ride lots. So, uh, there's one, uh, off 75 and, uh, 9, oh, sorry, 75 and 138. So people can drive, they can park their car, and then they can hop on one of the commuter buses that will take them downtown. So, so yes, this is the perfect opportunity to talk, uh, through the transportation study about what types of modes of transportation do you want to see in Clayton County? Uh, but I will also plug that we have some updates on the MARTA Bus Rapid Transit. Uh, that will be, um, goodness, it's still in the study phases. But I think the flyer said, you know, uh, 2030 is when the Riverdale route will be, uh, completed. And then in District One, there'll be Bus Rapid Transit that goes along the State Road 54 corridor. So we'll talk about different modes of transportation, whether it's a parking ride block that will take you downtown, or a Bus Rapid Transit that will help with the connectivity in Clayton County. Those are already in discussions.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Latarco. You're talking about the traffic lights and the, the noticing of the backup at Fielder and Mount Sinai Road. That is a debacle. We can't come out of the neighborhoods because the traffic light at Fielder and Mount Sinai versus the one at 42 and Fielder, all the traffic is coming at the same time. Can you please look into those two traffic lights?
Yes, ma'am. Well, we can look into the same time. Yes, ma'am.
Um, at the corner of 42 Highway and Rex Road, you're heading west from here on Rex Road. Left in a corner in front of Family Dollar is, the drainage is destroyed. And it's been, that drain has been destroyed. So it rains, it's putting a lot of water on that turn there. Um, I was complaining about it a few weeks ago, a few months ago. I'm sitting on dust on the, on the, on the, on the truck.
No, um, please, if you have things like that, if I don't know about them, I can try to get them fixed. Um, one, one aspect of that location, 42 Highway is a state highway. Rex Road is a county road. So it really gets into specifics about where the drainage issue is, if it's the county's responsibility or the state's responsibility. But we can always look into it. And if it's the state's responsibility, we pass it on to them. Um, but that's a good segue into one aspect that I always try to speak about is, especially at this time of the year, is maintenance on the roadways. Uh, we're getting ready to get into the colder months. And as much as we don't want to see potholes, potholes form in the colder months when the pavement contracts. So, um, we always ask, because we don't have enough staff to go out and proactively ride all the streets around the county and try to find potholes. Um, if we don't know about it, we can't fix it. So we ask the citizens, uh, with anything, to contact our department. Um, you can contact the Board of Commissioners, they'll pass it on to us. Or you can use the Click Clayton app that's available on both Apple and Android, where you can take a picture of it, and that stuff feeds directly into our department. Or if it's trash on the road, it feeds directly into the Code Enforcement Department. So, um, thank you for that question. Um, all the maintenance activities, they pop up overnight, and sometimes they, they get their own growth really quick. Um, again, we, if we don't know about it, we can't fix it. And you would be surprised how many people just assume somebody else is going to contact us. One more, ma'am.
Uh, the bridge on around the roads across this 675 also holds a lot of water over time. That's going to tear, we already have a lot of plant growth. And we know that that also exacerbates the situation.
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's a great item. And it's a Georgia DRT issue, but we can look into it in the past. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, another, another traffic light issue is Rex Road and State Road.
Yes, ma'am.
Like, now we've been, we've been talking about that for years.
We, we would love to. It's really not a traffic signal problem, it's a capacity of a road problem. Uh, we've looked at, can we add turn lanes? Can we add a roundabout? And what it comes down to is allocation of funding. Plain and simple. You're, to do an improvement project at that location, and off the top of my head, you're probably pushing $4 million to put the necessary infrastructure in there. A traffic signal can only do so much to make the road efficient. Usually, traffic signals offer, from a safety standpoint, access. Because it stops traffic certain ways to provide people access. There, there's tricks and trades, and we can smoke mirrors, make it flow as efficiently as possible. But there's a point where you get, you have to have lanes, whether they're turn lanes or through lanes, you just have to have that, or the traffic signal can actually be impediment.
So when we talk about the budget, and when we talk about when the Board of Commissioners and how the Board of Commissioners is allocating, uh, funding within the budget, some of that conversation is, can be about specific projects or within funding of transportation and development. But also, I have up here a slide, um, about the SLOS, the Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax that did pass that does, uh, provide infrastructure building needs. So you think there are parks, libraries, recreation centers, uh, here in Clayton County. But SLOS projects can also include, sorry, SLO, yes, SLOS projects can also include transportation SLOS, uh, projects. But if I can be very specific, I recommend, and I fully believe that the county should be, uh, investing into a specific T-SLOS. So I'm sure y'all have heard of the education SLOS, a law that the Board of, uh, the School Board passed. But if the county were to put on a ballot a T-SLOS, a Transportation Special Local Option Sales Tax, that would be dedicated funding specifically for transportation. specifically for transportation projects. And so, when we talk about that funding needing four million dollars to fix that one road, that is a large amount of money that, you know, the county can't expect to bear the brunt in one budget cycle. So, I just, I'll just throw that out there. I'm personally a fan of T-SLOS.
Uh, I think it was 1-2, and then we went to that house.
Just take this one.
Yeah, sure. So, um, on Jones Road, you're going across that bridge at 1-75?
What, what road was that, ma'am?
Kids, they need some barriers up there. Like, you know, you could literally cross over there 1-75 if you wanted to, and kill yourself. And so, there are no, no, no gates, the fence, yes, there's no fencing there, and those kids be walking across on the Mount Zion High School over there sometimes. That's a hazard.
We, we looked into that. Um, we were hopeful Georgia DRT was going to address it, because it's their bridge. Um, many years ago, when they went out and put fencing along all the bridges, they declined to do that one for some reason. Um, as probably about six years ago, we brought it up to begin and asked them to put it out there, and they declined. Um, the county looked into it, and we actually put out the bid at one point, and we were getting costs over $500,000 to go put the fence along a bridge.
What was the reason why they declined?
From Georgia DRT, it's not part of our government. So, um, and, and the cost was prohibited at that time. So, now, I will tell you this. Um, there will be some clearing in that area with developments that are coming in off of Mount Zion Parkway at some point, um, some car dealerships, and they will be adding some sidewalk and improving the shoulders in that area. So, at that point, unfortunately, the issue's going to get more pronounced, but when things get more pronounced, then sometimes it rises up to higher up the priority list. Um, that bridge, at some point, when Georgia DOT extends their, um, H R B lanes, um, along I-75, which they do have plans for, that bridge will have to be rebuilt, and I'm sure at that time, that bridge is going to be sufficient width for anything the county might want.
Well, I just pray God that nobody ends to their death for bridges.
Yes, ma'am.
Because by the time you go to procrastination, it's over. Because it's just by the way it starts, it has to happen, and I'm waiting for it to happen to happen for somebody to come down, or somebody to throw a rock or something.
Yes, Vicki.
Director Matarco, my, my statement is not a question, but a statement here, and you mentioned three or four times funding, funding, funding. Let me say this, the Commissioners are studying impact fees, and to my Commissioner, I want to say, these impact fees to get the funding for developers coming in here need to be implemented as soon as possible. Thank you.
Do you want to talk about how transportation is a part of the process?
Yes.
Okay, impact fees are not going to transportation. They're going to facilities, buildings, and public safety initiatives.
As currently written, that is correct.
As currently written?
Yes.
As currently approved, um, well, a month or two, we're good, so.
We're doing the, we're doing the here.
I thought it was supposed to be for infrastructure, and roads are part of infrastructure.
It, it depends on how you define infrastructure, so.
Roads.
I specifically, I.
I don't want us to delve too deep in that, um, but because District One is an industrial area, and we have so many tractor trailers, we have so many 18-wheelers, I know that everyone who lives in this community wants to make sure that the county is spending money to make sure that our roads are well maintained, and impact fees that would allocate money specifically for transportation could have been a solution. It was not included prominently within the impact fee resolution.
What about the SLOS?
There are some transportation and development projects within the SLOS. I, I don't have those offhand, if you want to mention some of them, but I don't, I don't believe that there are many transportation projects in the, the, well, it's Tuesday, this past Tuesday, um, Clayton County overwhelmingly approved a SLOS, uh, which is a continuation of the one penny sales tax, uh, but there were new, uh, projects that were added, and those will take effect in 2027, 2028. If you want to mention the transportation projects in that SLOS.
So, the SLOS that Commissioner Reeves is talking about is for, it starts in 2027, the collections do it, and it, it goes for six years. One important thing about the SLOS program, almost every project, you have to collect the funds and have them in the bank before you can spend them. Uh, transportation is included, an aspect of it in the overall project plan for the county, just like each city's has, they have the opportunity to run their own projects. The county is doing a, a, um, mixture of different projects, whether it's public safety related, there's a lot of emphasis on replacing some of the aged fleet, um, whether they're police vehicles, sheriff vehicles, some fire, or some construction equipment. The transportation side continue is essentially what is in the current SLOS program, the 2021 program, which is heavy in, in maintenance and resurfacing, to make sure we have costs to, uh, resurface the roads around the most dire need. Um, there's also money included to do a, we hope it's more than just a portion, we hope it's the whole thing, but the initiative on Terra Boulevard to provide sidewalks in the street lighting, um, that's a big effort in the county. It's actually a big effort in the regional aspect to provide that protection and safety on roads that, in some locations, you have a big dozen cars going through there. Um, so, the SLOS program does, um, include a portion to pay the county's match on that, but most of the SLOS program from a transportation standpoint is more of a maintenance upkeep initiative. Um, to Commissioner's point, we could do a SLOS program for transportation. I could, in 10 minutes, give you projects that you won't be able to fund in 30 years, that I feel are needed. This is a part of this program to have a plan to identify what's the most needed, what's the most logical to spend our dollars on, and what's the most logical to go at the federal level or the state level and try to convince those people to spend money in Clayton County. So, that's very pertinent to what we're here for. We don't want to go do a project and spend our, our, our resources, uh, which are very limited, on a project over here if the citizens don't want it, or we don't want to spend it over here if it's not going to make an impact to the way we live and the way we communicate in Clayton County. If, if you have any more questions, um, you can always go through Commissioner Inter A, or you can touch our Department directly, and if I, again, if I don't know about, I can't answer it, or provide you some commentary on what we're working. Thank you for your time, and thank you for coming out and showing me how important it is to this.
Thank you.
I know, folks, we're going to have transportation questions. That's why we not only have our Director of Transportation and Development, but also to talk about the, the transportation plan that is underway so that you all can bring those concerns to that study, so that, uh, as the Director said, Clayton County can create a plan on the prior, the priorities needed around transportation around the county. I am going to bring up our Executive Director of the Housing Authority. I know folks have questions about housing. Come on, this will take a while to get them down. Next time, I, I promise, we're going to have walk-in music if we close this theater again. All right. Okay, Executive Director, come on up.
So, yes.
They are already sensitive, and they went over time. They went over time, but very much, so, yeah.
Okay, hello, everyone. How are you? Great, great. I'm Manda La Jones. I work for the Housing Authority in Clayton County. She asked me to come and talk today about, speak to you a little bit about Clayton County Housing Task Force. Show of hands, how many of you have heard about Clayton County Housing Task Force? A few. Let, let me just tell you really quickly what it is. So, 2024, we established a Housing Task Force for Clayton County. Why did we need a task force? We needed a Housing Task Force because we wanted to make sure, as we look two to seven years from now, as we look at the unincorporated portions of Clayton County and our seven cities, are we growing in a smart and strategic way? Do we have the right housing stock to attract the talent we want and need in this county, uh, to support our task base, all of those things? So, we started a Housing Task Force. That Housing Task Force is comprised of a representative, the city manager for each of our seven cities. We have the county representatives, the G A, it's a critical part of this Housing Task Force. We have some of our major partners like Eritropolis, Atlanta, and others, who are currently a member of this task force. Our primary goal was to find the funding to have commissioned a comprehensive housing plan and strategy for the entire county. What will that plan and strategy address? That plan and strategy will tell us, okay, what is the proper balance when we look at our housing stock in terms of what is for rent and what is for purchase? What does balance look like? What are the major thoroughfares and corridors that we want to develop so that we can keep more of our tax dollars in our county? How do we create more live, work, play type, uh, opportunities? So, when you think of Battery, you think, uh, Atlantic Station, places like that, those are great places where people come, spend money, spend time. We want those types of things in Clayton County. Does that make sense? When we look at our housing stock for purchase, we want to increase our homeownership rate in Clayton County. That's one of my priorities. We want to have a housing stock in Clayton County that will attract folks at every station in life. First-time home buyers, move-up buyers, affluent buyers. We want all of those folks. That's what this plan will be able to tell us. The great news is, we were able to identify the funding, so funding was awarded to the county, being administered by Mr. G A here, and this funding is specifically to have this plan and strategy commissioned. Hopefully, that makes sense. What questions you all have for me?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Sir.
Yes, sir.
In having a proper balance, that you say, of, of housing for the move, the moving up and the more and down economic strata of our society, in order to have that, sir, you have to have control, and what we, what you don't have is control over the investors who come in and buy up that stock. So, would you please address that?
Yeah, so, the market is the market, but to your point, one of the ways that we can be more specific and intentional as a county is to own some of the land that we want to develop, so that we can create what we say we want to see in Clayton County. So, you're, what you're talking about, being intentional, those things, this plan and strategy will help us, and then I mentioned the strategy piece, because the strategy includes, okay, Clayton County, okay, seven cities in Clayton County. This is how you accomplish what you say you want. So, those types of things will be addressed.
Keep talking.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, for your question.
I have a question also, not really a question. Um, you said balance. Balance isn't just a population, the people that live there. It's what they do when they, so you're going to need, we don't want another food desert like College Park, right? The gas station issue. We don't want that. The nail salons and all this. We want an economy that thrives within their own realm of where they live, work, and play. That's what we want, or we're not seeing that. It wasn't even in this plan with all these town halls. Town halls, we know, they're just like condos. Typically, over time, they don't hold their value. Then they become rundown, left, dead, or taken care of. We want more, the single-family units, or, you know, a diverse even in that realm. And, um, so, balance isn't just what we're building for housing, any companies, that whole thing, which you said, which, in my mind, let's leave it. The next question is.
So, before you go, before you ask your next question, let me speak to what you just mentioned. So, when I said balance, you're right, balance means a lot of different things. I mentioned that balance as it relates to what we have for rent and what we have for purchase. We got a balance currently right now.
Oh, yeah, because developers come in and they buy single-family dwellings because the taxes have gone, but yet the taxes have dropped. They were overcharged about 20 grand under the new economy. But I, I'm just going to say this. What's happening is, you have people that are in the community development in the Economic Department, and you're funding a commission of people, like, I don't even know if those people are going to live, work, and play in our community. I hope that they do, but if you have any of these homeowners that are here today, all those committees, are any of y'all on those committees?
So, okay, so.
I'm not saying, I want to know how much money, and this is the problem, and, and this is the problem.
So, before you get to the problem, let me address your second question.
She wants to win out the cases for them to do their jobs. The firemen do their jobs. They do what they're paid to do. Teachers do what they're paid to do, right?
They don't get paid.
Right? Police officers, they all do their jobs. You have a job to do in your department. You have all this expertise. You have a degree, I believe, a master's in, uh, design.
Let's not make personal attacks on the Clayton County staff.
What I'm saying is, why don't we use the money that we pay people to do their jobs to do it? Why do we have to pay, give thousands and thousands of dollars to study committees, and none of these people are on?
Okay, so I think I understand what you're, what you're asking is around the studies, the comprehensive plan. Well.
It doesn't make sense.
Those are paid studies, which is standard across any municipality, any county who is doing a comprehensive, who is doing a comprehensive plan or zoning rewrite, they will hire experts in those fields, individuals who are, um, architects in, in those fields. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that the housing study itself is not, um, the Housing Task Force is not a task force where the individuals are being paid to be on that committee. I just want to make sure that I, I addressed, I addressed that. Yes, that, that's, that was for the comprehensive plan, yes. The cost of being able to do a robust study in a large metropolitan area, cap, area county has a cost associated with it, and if we were to take that 200,000 and try to buy, uh, as, um, what's called your director, I still want to call you Director, Manda La mentioned, 200,000 to buy what a plot of land and to build a house, that is not the same level of return on investment to, uh, have a two-year study to bring the community and engage the community in on what the county's going to look like for the next 10 years. So, I, I want to make sure that I, I address that as best as possible, and we are getting ready to move on to our interactive housing initiative.
But what I want to say about that, though, is that, with that being said about housing, and, and this is the problem that we're seeing in our communities, they're buying up the comprehensive, but.
I understand that, that is a state-level issue. I, I know, but we are, we are running behind on time. I do not mean to cut you off. We can absolutely, we can absolutely speak offline. We are running behind on time.
How much of that is for?
We can absolutely speak offline, absolutely. All right, I saw Ms. Flommy, uh, Ms. Brenda, they were moving on to our inter. Uh, then we're moving on to our activity.
I just want, I was just going to say to my man, we want to stay on track, but I think it's always needed, it's, it's kind of this line for us as a community, the comment that you all know right there, and hear what he, all of his do. Her point to me is very banging to me, because she feel that the homeowner should be a part of whatever board you're speaking of, although Mr. Jones is the director of Clayton County Housing Authority, and he just admitted straight that. But here's a, here's my last thing to push time on.
So, let me just speak to that real quick. I know, but I, I want to say.
What's a job? To be honest with you, it's the common courtesy of the citizen to break it to you, and you, you know, you know the deal, but the, the same is, is the closing eye, because it was really messing with my ear, going anywhere with a student, and they're asking for really important question for us. My thing is, when we come in here, we want to feel first invited, second, we want to feel that we're being heard, third, we want to feel that we are not being, uh, omitted from being able to give you what you want us to give you, and that's what we see and what we deal with each and every day. So, if you make us feel uncomfortable, you get ready to go into this other entity to have your meeting, we become a no-show. Okay, without us, there is no you. So, her question regarding. So her question regarding high face line, it's important. It's important to my ears and my neighbors' ears, and I'm gonna feel better than you, Mr. Jones. You may go far, but I'm done.
Thank you. I just wanted to say real quick to the initial two questions. The task force in this current state, we are looking to expand. Right now, it's not comprised of necessarily members from the community, but there is a time when that will be the case. So I wanted to address that. Secondly, her initial way here, her initial question was really speaking to economic development. I'm talking to you about having a housing strategy and plan. What I do want you all to know is that we understand if done correctly, housing, economic development, and community development has to go hand in hand. So we have those things in mind. That's what I would like to say.
Just want to make sure you have any questions, Ms. Brenda?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, when you were naming the members of the task force, there were two Clayton County residents that you omitted. One being me.
Yes.
And the other one being Robert.
Yes.
We are Clayton County residents, homeowners, who are on the task force.
Great point. I didn't mention that because you all also have another role as my board members. But yes, you are homeowners, and thank you for bringing that to my attention. Is there another question?
And there was one, yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. With respect to development that occurs, I know that a lot of what is happening in communities is overseen by HOAs. To what extent are HOAs being given the resources, like you mentioned, like, instance, like Mr. Garbo mentioned, like, who's checking in to see that these homes that are not supposed to be rentals are in fact certainly in the capacity that are? To what extent are HOAs and HOA members engaging so that we can have the resources, knowledge, understanding to actually move in a direction of trying to...
Yes, so I'm gonna let Mr. GED, because that's more of a zoning and permitting issue. But I'm gonna let Mr. GED speak to that.
I think we kind of touched on it before. That HOAs are actually a legal entity that is pretty stark by the developer when they come in. At some point on the construction, they hand that whole entity into the homeowners. Usually, when two-thirds or 75% of subdivision is built, they hand it to them. They have powers. HOAs can put lien on you. They do have real powers. So, just like I explained earlier, the HOAs, it's that entity, that party, supposed to police their community. They deal with all kinds of things. Then when they engage the community, it becomes a code and sort enforcement issues. And most of it really is when neighbors report to the community as to, hey, I have this many people coming in and I would just build it.
The question, what I'm getting to is, at the end of the day, like, how are we empowering people whose day job is not to manage a community, to take over a community? Despite often, I'm a HOA president. What we've had to deal with over the last couple of years in terms of what is handed to us from a developer or multiple developers creates an untenable situation for managing and upkeeping communities. We have to make the same type of budgetary decisions that you all say that you're constrained by. Builders come in, they build homes, and then after they build homes, they leave homeowners with a lot of concerns, issues that people that are not, do not have that as their day job. So what extent can we ensure that HOAs and the neighbors that live in communities are given the education and the required that you want to have, that maybe more prepared?
I would say that we can have that conversation. It's not something we currently do in terms of arming them with the ability to manage what they have been handed. It's not commonly done, but I'm willing to sit down with you and talk to you how it can be done.
Because it may involve enforcement. That's the reason why enforcement doesn't occur. There's numbers called...
Example, because I see maybe coming to an HOA or figuring their way through the commissioner's office, how do we do that to coordinate what is supposed to see or know? Do the HOA really know what is in the plan of the subdivision? Most people just go buy homes and move in. They never look at the plan of the subdivision to see if there are any conditions on it. So we can contribute those type of knowledge to them and make copies of their plan and email to them things they're supposed to know and manage. So let's talk, let's talk further to see how I can come up with something through the commissioner's office, see how, because if it works really, we do account for it.
I also recommend reaching out to Community Affairs. They do build relationships with HOAs. I know that you have come out to the specific HOA meeting that the police department has had to help support HOA presidents and HOA boards. So that will be a great conversation for the Community Affairs Unit around how to strengthen maybe the enforcement practices within HOAs as best as possible. Because as Director GED said, y'all are, you know, semi-autonomous, governing by self, that is law. So we are going to move on to our presenters with Fire. Thank you so much. Given time, I did skip over our interactive housing activity. If we do have enough time, we'll swing back to it. But I wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to have our Fire Department come out and to talk about the new fire stations that are going to be built in District One, including Fire Station 17. Oh, Fire Station 15. Fire Station 15, that some of you might have asked if you came along Lake Harton, if you passed Kroger in Lake City, then you could actually see the construction of that building, which just had a groundbreaking just last November. Yes, yes, just here, all right.
Great, thank you so much. Whenever I'm in front of the community now, sir, it's really important to me that you know who I am. So my name is Tim Swed. I currently serve as your Fire Chief, EMS Director. Tell a bit about me, I was born and raised right here in District One. I've been here all 56 years. Teddy Clayton's thankful a little bit, took a break from college, went to the University of West Georgia, graduated there with a bachelor's. But my connection to this community goes back 56 years. So it's important to me and I'm honored to serve as your Fire Chief. Really quick, we'll run through some projects. Community development kind of stole some of this from me, but just for FYI, Fire Department has $39.9 million worth of capital improvement projects currently under construction and coming out of the ground. First one I want to point to is our new fire headquarters located at 6345 Gardenwood Boulevard. Premiered with Southern Regional Hospital, it sits to the right of that, behind our current fire station number one. That project, I mean, 19,000, 800 square feet is funded out of the Fire Fund. For those of you homeowners in the room, you know that as far as your property tax, you pay into what we call is the Fire Fund. That fund where you pay on your annual property bills is what funds the infrastructure and the improvements for your fire department. $9.8 million project, and we are slated to start moving in. Quick update, the third week of December. So be on the lookout for some ground racking, or excuse me, some ribbon cutting information that will come out. We are currently located, our fire headquarters is in Riverdale on Highway 85, just south of 138. That facility was built in the early 90s, and we have simply outgrown. Next. Directly beside that is a brand new fire station number one, 6355. They don't sell on the same parcel, however, they are not connected. They are two separate buildings. That building is 10,689 square feet, funded out of the 2021 squash, so thank you for that. 8.6 million dollar project, and once again, we are slated to move into both of these facilities beginning the third week of December. Next. Next one is fire station number nine, located at 4181 Old Dixie Highway. It's 9,494 square feet, funded out of the 04 squash. You say 04. Low feedback about that. So if anything, know anything about the Old Dixie 285 corridor. Old Dixie Highway is GDOT old and our Georgia State Road, and they have realigned that road over the years. When they realigned it, they are now taking our current fire station number nine kind of out of commission when it comes to emergency response standpoint. So we have been holding money from the 04 squash to get us to where GDOT is beginning to finalize their project so we can ensure that we placed our station that was conducive to emergency response. That's why it's taken us so long to get this building completed. 04 squash, 9.7 million dollar project slated to open in January of '26. Next. Fire station number 15, District One, located at 1950 Harper Drive, just basically around the corner. 9,494 square feet, funded out of the Fire Fund. Once again, that's an 8.2 million dollar project. Right now, it is slated to open around April of '26. Costlessly optimistic that we'll probably look in late February, early March. So just a few more months, we'll have that building open. Once again, just be on the lookout for ribbon cutting ceremonies for all these projects, please. Next. Okay, all the projects I just spoke to is right at 39.9 million. Those projects are out of the ground, looking to open in the next few months. Future expansion, specifically in District One, is the new fire station number two. It's located at 3675 Rex Road, right here at District One. Top picture is how it will look. The bottom picture is the basically the parcel that it will sit on. It's funded out of 2021 squash, 7.6 million. We have, right now, we've done the site of that patient. Our architect and engineering firms, all the contractual documents are done. We are simply waiting for funding from that squash to be released so that we can release the bid to a GC and begin to bring that building out of the ground. Feature expansion on top of that is the new fire station number 13, located at 9195 Old Coastland Road. 10,689 square foot building. It will be funded out of the Fire Fund. Cost yet has been determined, and we are projecting our building of that is to be determined as well. This particular fire station will sit on the same plot of land that the new county administrative building will sit on. And the county administrative building bought their land. We know we needed a new fire station, 13, so the Fire Fund bought three acres of that parcel, which is where this new fire station will be. Like, that's kind of all of our capital projects initiative. Quick, going back to District One. Those who don't know, there's currently three stations in District One. Fire station number two on Forest Parkway at the time of '42. Fire station number eight, which is on Maddox Road. Fire station number 14, which is an animal loss in South Park. Fire station 15 will be the fourth station in District One. I'm also beginning to plan for our next two stations. We're always looking forward as the county grows, you know, we must grow with it. I'm looking for a fifth station in District One, which is down around the 675 138 corridor. We have some extended response times down in that area, so that's the next station that I'm looking at on top of that. I'm looking to expand that on the south end of the county in the luxury area. So futures, stations 18 and 19 is where we're looking in the future. One believing issue is, if you heard about the second board, if there's anything this community needs to be proud about, you can be proud about what I'm basically talking about. So back in September, I presented to the board the mission during the next work session, the idea of bringing whole blood transfusions from your fire department to our community and visitors who may come through here when it comes to our EMS side of our business. So we partner with Southern Regional Medical Center. They serve as our blood bank. Our goal is to improve survival outcome for the pre-hospital stay. So what's that mean? So we treated a minor call for a car wreck. The injuries to the body, we can tell pretty much within a few moments if you have internal bleeding. Historically speaking, the only thing we can do to try to help that is push what we call a crystalloid solution. Now, as of October 1st, your EMS units in this community have the ability to provide whole blood transfusions right on the scene of any emergency scene that could be caused. That's been our goal, is to prepare my cousin next slide. So we went live with carrying the typo on October 1st, administered under the protocol of paramedics with advanced training, monitoring for safety, transfusion reactions, and transport time, coordinated with medical control and our trauma centers. If you don't know, we have our own full-time physician that works for our organization. He's on the payroll just like me. He serves since I'm an executive team. He is in his space Monday through Friday, just like I am in our community. We just closed out the month of October. We administered eight blood transfusions in the month of October, right here in this community. Of those, three of those, knowing what we know, those three of the eight that we pushed, those three individuals would not be alive today if we did not have him. Real quick, if you don't know, your fire department is accredited. We have a Class 1 ISO rating and we're accredited, obviously, for college car service and the measure. Originally accredited in 2017, but back before the accreditation volume of '22 was re-accredited. We're currently now begin, are preparing to go back for our third accreditation process in 2027. With that, as a rewrite of our internal strategic plan, which basically sets the footprint for what the organization will try to do over the next five years. We have some internal and community stakeholders meetings. Those were several weeks ago. Our strategic plan that we're fixing to write will take us from 2026 through 2031. So just pay attention to some of the board meetings. You'll see me on a work session probably around March, April of '26, where I will present our next year, five-year strategic plan to the commissioners. And then the next week, I hope to get their blessing where they fully adopt it, and our new strategic plan will go live on the 1st of October 26. Next. Outdoor burning, please. If you are in QR code, please scan that. Outside burning went live on October 1st through April 30th. You know, the other towns of the month, outdoor burning is illegal or not allowed. Our burn ban, our burn ban line is updated every morning at 9:00. So as far as the metro line of footprint that the commissioner we spoke to, we are part of that metro line of county, there is a burning ordinance that we must abide by. April, October 1st, open burning return. I will tell you, and we've had our fair share of already brush fires that have gotten out of hand by controlled burning. So please, 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 if you happen to burn in your yard, scan that QR code. It takes you straight to our website, and it gives you the rules of that. In addition, please make sure you call that number every morning by, or after 9:00, and it will tell you whether or not today is a burn day or a night. Hydrants. So what's been going on the last two months? So at Fire for the month of October and the winter is when we service all the hydrants in our community. So just specifically for District One, there are 2,578 fire hydrants that sit just in this one district, and we must service every October and into December. Got some other information yesterday. There's 24 hydrants left that are yet to be serviced. So hopefully here, that may have been done by today, we may be here, so I'm not sure. But hydrant service is a mandatory requirement for us, the ISO, as well as our accreditation process. But in addition to that, what it does for us, it ensures that when we arrive on the scene of a working structure fire, that hydrant is working. I will say it, and I know sometimes it makes you water a little brown, and it tends to be to apologize for that. But basically what we are doing is we are painting that hydrant, we're freezing the connections, as well as we're opening up the bonnet to make sure that that hydrant is fresh-roused. Once we open it up, the kind of description, with the water in the pipes, this sometimes can come back to residential and change the color of the water. You do apologize, but it's a necessary thing for us to ensure that we know that there's water on those hydrants. Next. Quick closeout, we'll talk about some stats specifically for this report. So these stats are from January 1, 2025, to October 31 of '25. So on the left, under the yellow, District One, through these first 10 months, we had 9,853 calls per service, specifically in District One, as compared to 2024 of 9,470. So this year, we have seen a 4.04% increase in call volume specifically in District One. Bottom of the gray is the overall cost for the county that we're running. Currently have 16 fire stations, soon to be 17, once we get 15 open. So as of October 31st, we're sitting at 45,180 calls per service as compared to '24 at the same time, 44,203. So right now, we're tracking for a 2.21% call volume increase for 2025 as compared to 2024. The number in the bottom red, the 54, 245, predicting or projecting out to the end of the calendar year, that is the number we are shooting for. And that is right now pulling to. And I will tell you, late October, or 1st of November, we began our fairly busy season both on both sides of the house, EMS and fire. EMS respiratory changes, we all know. If you don't know, Tuesday morning, we are going to be freezing, so please prepare for that. But that number is tracking current call volumes today. More so, we've run another algorithm than in fact, that monitor right now is looking to be about 60,000 for the end of the year, so substantial call volume increase for us. I think that's it. Yep, there it is. Any questions for me? Please, somebody's got to ask you something.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
With the price of the buildings, the new buildings that you just mentioned, does that include the equipment, the trucks that will serve that fire station?
Absolutely not. That number you saw on there is strictly land acquisition, if there was any, in the actual construction... in the actual construction costs of the facility. That does not include personnel and or apparatus that will be assigned to it.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
For the equipment that a firefighter has to use, you know, the boots, the clothing, the helmet, does, does the county pay for that or does he, does the fire person have to supply it himself?
Yes, sir. We pay for everything. So, what you were speaking of, just to outfit a firefighter, from the protective boots all the way up to the air pack on the back, to their helmet overall, is right at ten grand per firefighter. We currently have four hundred and fifty-three in this county. And in addition, we provide them two sets of gear from a health and wellness perspective so that they always have. Come out of a house fire, that gear is now contaminated, right? It's contaminated with the raw products of fire, which is what they would extinguish. So several years ago, we planned through multiple years, all our personnel have two sets of gear. So in that case, that individual returns to the station, gets his clean set of gear off the truck or her gear puts on a truck. In addition, we have what we call our extractors in every one of our fire stations. They are high-powered, fire-specific washing machines. They take that contaminated gear, throw it in there, and yes.
Oh, I was just going to ask if you could talk about how the fire departments, the fire stations that you mentioned, that are, they are fully paid for.
Yes.
When they broke ground, they were paid.
Yes. So, looking back through, you saw those that are SWS funding, that's a hundred percent, a hundred percent funded by SWS, and those that you see on the fire fund. Those projects are already a hundred percent funded. As our annual tax revenue comes into our department every twelve months, based off your taxes that you pay, we are tasked with that. And I will give you real, real quick, down to the low level on the fire tax. For every one thousand dollars of value your home is valued at, you pay four dollars and fifteen cents to us to have it protected. Shoot, that's two hundred thousand, your, your house is worth a hundred thousand, it's four hundred and fifteen dollars. Two hundred thousand, it's eight thirty, three hundred thousand goes up from there. That money comes into us, we use it to run more fire services for twelve months, as well as plan for the future. So it's just like having, so our fire fund account of reserve is the same as the account that we manage for you to assure that we can expand and bring these buildings out of the ground and their homes and everything.
Is Brenda in this camp?
Yes, Miss Brenda.
Oh, I didn't have a watch up there.
Okay. Is it him?
Yes. Oh, apologies. That is what I call planning and that is called balance with our community. And as the population grows, that part is already set. Good job.
Thank you.
Secondly, I know that you all did have a training program in some of the, in some of the high schools where the students have wanted to become firefighters. Are you still doing it?
Yes, we are.
Oh, that's very good.
Thank you. Every single high school in the county is now part of our program. Now, does that mean every single county high school has someone? No. I think we have, we're down to two, I think, left. If you'll notice for me, Forest Park High, class of nineteen eighty-eight. I just got my first Forest Park kid in, in our program. I want somebody at Forest Park. So, yes, we are in every high school, however, not every high school has a student in the program. What she's referring to, we call it our pathway program. So, high school students across the county, in their sophomore, sophomore year, they take a class called Intro to Public Safety. They must have that before they can enter into one of our programs. Take that in tenth grade, eleventh grade, they decide what route of public safety they want to choose. If they choose fire and EMS, in the eleventh grade, they come to us, the last block of their schooling day. They're put on the bus, they're shipped to our fire headquarters now, down in Drivendale. They get off the bus, they enter into our building. And for their junior year, we take them through the firefighter law and state mandated curriculum through their junior year. It's enter junior year, the state has agreed with us to allow us to test them. Legally, you can't be a firefighter in the state of Georgia without being eighteen years of age. A lot of those kids are not eighteen, however, the state allows us to still test them. They hold their certificate until they turn eighteen. Go home for the summer, they come back in their twelfth grade year, we run them through Emergency Medical Technician Basic. So they graduate at the end of, of their twelfth grade year with their E M T B. We have an understanding, you graduate high school, you pass internal firefighter and your E M T. I meet you on the graduation stage, I present you with a helmet and a job offer written in sixty-six thousand. Little bit of history on that program. We, we had our first students enter in twenty-seventeen, so our first graduating class was twenty-eighteen. Some, some success stories out of that. I currently have three individuals from my twenty-eighteen class that just became sergeant of our organization and now serving as supervisor. In addition to that, I've had quite a few go through their further education to become paramedics. So what they are doing is they're sergeant paramedics on analysis and they're saving lives in this community every day. In addition, I just had two buy their first homes. So it's, you're talking about doing a first program. It's an amazing program and I could not be prouder. One thing that, so Chief Parkinson, which is our former fire chief, kind of developed that program as well as the late commissioner, Sonsting Gregory, from D Boy. That was kind of their baby and they started that program. Chief Parkinson, our goal has always been for that, that program to fund the vacancies in our organization. I have the highest senior class, senior class this year than we've ever had. So I have forty-two students that will potentially graduate in May of twenty-sixth and be looking to become firefighters. Brenda, yeah, Miss Brenda?
Who wants to go first? I'll go first. Not to be too intrusive, Chief, but do you encourage, you, you just mentioned you had two, about two that went through the class by their homes, by, by their first home in Clayton County.
Yes, sir, both of them. They live in Clayton County, yes.
Let me ask this. Do you encourage the rest of the students who are yet to graduate to make their homes in Clayton County?
Yes, and, and thank you, because I'm fixing to give a, a kudos to Commissioner Reeves as well. If you don't know, so the county, the board commissioners approve what we call county stipends every, every year. So in our budget, the county as a whole has, has approved it again for this fiscal year and I hope we do next year. If you purchase a home and live in this community, purchase, they pay you two fifty a month to live here basically as a thank you back to our community. In addition to that, if you rent in the county and work in, and that's just public safety, just public safety. If you rent in the county and you work for public safety, they give you a hundred fifty every month towards your rent. So, yes. Yes, sir.
Yeah, what I mean, he said, talk about how the buildings or the fire stations, are they one level? Because I know y'all have applied that whole one more.
No. Go back to, back to the, the, the. Yeah, so if you'll notice, as we kind of circle through, that was fun. Every new station is coming out of ground now, as well as what's currently planned are identical. The only thing you may see difference is some of them have three bays where the fire and EMS units park and the other ones have two. Those that have three bays, we call those in the fire service double companies. And traditionally, where you see the three bays, we run seven ladder trucks in this community, which are requirements. A lot of our double company stations or the three bays is those that have an ambulance, a fire truck, and a ladder truck. Station fifteen right on the corner is a two bay. It will have, familiar with Station Two on Forest Parkway. Going back to what Mr. Garber kind of asked earlier, the apparatus for your new fire station fifteen is already in service in the community. Ladder two, which currently sits at Station Two on Highway forty-two, will be relocated to this new fire station and become ladder fifteen, okay? In addition, there's an ambulance running down in the south end of the county, Meth fifteen, that will roll up and will run out of new station fifteen. So the station fifteen will have a ladder company, a transport unit. In addition, we run what we call battalions throughout the county. Have three battalions, which are lead supervisors every morning at seven o'clock, each in shifts. Three new battalion chiefs come on duty. Those three battalion chiefs operate a segment of the, of the county fire stations. Battalion one, that kind of works this side of the county, is currently running out of our station fourteen, which is on Allen Block and South Park Boulevard. That, that battalion, chief officer will move to the new station fifteen. So station fifteen, I have a ladder truck and transport unit and a supervisor in the front side. But they are two-story. Go back to. The main entry of the fire station is to the right. So you see the three apparatus bay doors, that is the ample apparatus bay where the fire apparatus park. To the right of that will become is a five-story hose tower. That is just some historical design that we added to our new fire stations. Not to get too deep, back in the old days, when we'd vault fire our hose, the only way we had to dry it was to elevate it. Each section of our hose is fifty foot in length. So, the historical vision behind this is to simulate the traditions of the old hose towers. Just in the right of that hose tower is the main entry. Enter, in the main entry door, there's a front visiting area, the offices for the leadership for that ship, as well for the community to engage. Other side of that is their downstairs living area where their TV is, their kitchen. They have three individual pantries. Once again, these men will come to work at seven o'clock in the morning. They don't go home until the next morning at seven. So breakfast, lunch, dinner, snacks, anything, they, it's all, so our, our fire stations are less like your, your homes at home. Directly behind the kitchen is a large gym for their health and wellness. And then there's a stairwell on the front and a stairwell on the back that leads to upstairs. So yes, every one of us now two stories. Upstairs are ten individual living bedrooms that the personnel would go to within the evening, co-work at seven at nine P M. night. They're allowed to turn in to their bumps and try to get some rest before the next call comes. So there's ten bedrooms at every single fire station that houses many of their, their working employees. All the action.
You start looking at the whole tower, that's what I'm.
Yeah, that's what that is. So please, once again, be on the lookout for the ribbon cutting ceremonies, especially for this one, I want you to come see the warm new fire station. You'll have to walk through it, look at everything, and see it just like we do, so.
Or we push it?
Yes.
Yeah, or they're going to push it, or are we, do we get to push the trucks in?
So, what I am going to do, back to the hose towers. So once again, our hoses are fifty feet in length. What I am going to do is there will be a section of our hose, two sections. The crews that will move into new fire station fifteen, so the crews who work for your fire department, all three crews, all three shifts, will be able to sign a section of that hose. In addition, there's another section that the county leadership, I'm asking them to sign. Those hoses will be connected and the ribbon breaking or cutting is the actual, the disconnection of the hose, which simulates back in the day how we opened up new structures when it comes to the issue. And then those hoses, there'll be a third one, in that five-story tower at the very top, there'll be three hoses that hang down with all those signatures on it. These fire headquarters will actually be ready for cut. With the fire stations, I'm going to do the fire operations.
Fire truck push-in.
Fire truck push-in is what she's asking, is every time we buy a new piece of fire apparatus and we put it in service, we do what's called a push-in ceremony. To, we did it. Trying to think. Back to the SWS, once again, thank you so much for those, for passing the twenty-twenty-seven SWS. Fire was, we have some equipment in there, continue to help us to have modernized, new equipment in the streets and areas. So thank you so much. Yeah. You late? Nope, she said no. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief, so. So we're going to hear from refuse and I'm looking for a code enforcement. Hey. So we know that most of the questions, but I feel like a lot of the questions today were around zoning. Typically, refuse and code enforcement, you all get the bulk of, of the questions. I'll, I'll hand this over and tell y'all to take it back.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Captain Angela Gooden and I'm one of the division commanders for the Clayton County prison. The prison has three divisions, refuse control, code enforcement, and then we have M A services. The three departments work together in Clayton County while also saving y'all some, some money while we're cleaning it. Anything that will clean comes, is between these two departments. Code enforcement works with the private sector. Refuge control works with unincorporated public roads, buildings. So we do anything from picking up trash, cutting grass, cleaning up abatments that come in from code enforcement. We also clean up the lot of bus stop routes. We clean up any dead animal carcasses that are on the roadways. So pretty much anything. How do you report this? You can either call us directly on the phone, you go through Click Clayton, which is a great resource. Typically, when I get these calls, it takes me anywhere from one to five business days. I tell a lot of constituents that most of the time it takes me one day to respond to your complaints. The only thing that alters that timeline is the weather or if something out of the ordinary happens. Something that we also do that you may not be aware of, that I haven't been mentioning lately, is we do graffiti cover routes. So we actually just went out to Mocha Grande and the overpass was saturated with graffiti and we actually covered up all of that graffiti. So if you, out and you see graffiti on, on the roadways, we actually remove it from the roadways also. You know, report that to our department. We are actually winding down on the grass cutting season and what we're, what we're concentrating on now is cleaning up the linalite issues, the overgrown bushes. So also, I'm going to be taking care of like the drainage on some of the main county roads. So if you see anything, you know, we all work together. You call my department, I'll come out and go ahead and take care of it. Another program that I'm proud of is the community cleanups, where if you want to do a community cleanup, you will contact me. I will come out and we'll map out a safe route for you to clean up. We'll provide the trash bags, the gloves, and then we also remove the debris that was picked up. So that's pretty much all that I have. As far as the dump rolls for District One, lately, we have been able to actually clean all the dump rolls at least once a week for the month of October. So that's something that's, I'm real proud of also, and we've been cutting down on the disposed garbage. I have a, I have a table out in the foyer where I have some pictures. I also have brochures that detail what the refuse control does. So if you have any questions, after code enforcement presents, you can ask me.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. Officer Captain Code Enforcement, I just wanted to back on what Captain Gooden was saying about how to get in touch with us as well as code enforcement. You can use Click Clayton as well as you can file a complaint with the office by phone or by email. I know when I came in, earlier this afternoon, I had some people came by the table and was talking to them and I asked them what they're familiar with code enforcement. And a lot of you guys say you work and that's a good thing. A lot of you guys, we are very responsive when you guys call in a complaint. I want to thank you very much. We try, once you call in a complaint or use the Click Clayton app to file your complaint, we try to be responsible in seventy-two hours, if not earlier. So I want to thank you. Officer Roy Ethan, District One is more often than I am, I'm inspector too, but I also want to come out and represent code enforcement as well. We do also have brochures out there to make you more familiar with what code enforcement does and we will be passing them out to you. Okay, so if you have any questions for us, take them.
That's a three-way split.
I'll go third.
Miss Makey?
I'll go second.
All right.
I was just going to say, especially when I called your department, y'all respond very quickly. Because when I was out of the county, if I see something, I call you guys and you're Johnny and Spock and Spade.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate that.
I want to piggyback on that statement. Y'all have a, I guess the word is undaunted job to do because there are people. No, let me say, the people in our commu, ninety-nine percent of the people in our. No, let me say, the people in our commu-, ninety-nine percent of the people in our community are good, hardworking, honest, clean people. There is only one percent of our population who is throwing the trash on the side, and litter on the side of the road that is making us look bad. And I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for the job that y'all do, because if you pick it up in the morning, if y'all pick it up in the morning, it's back out there the next day. And I know you can't be there all the time, seven, twenty-four seven. And thank you for your job.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
I just interject, Mr. Mr. Mickey, you might see that you have a cameo from the day I did a ride-along with code enforcement, and we just happened to be on, uh, where were we? Dale and, is that forty-two or is that, that's not right.
Was that a glitz?
It was a blue glitz. Okay. Mr. Mickey happened to be passing by because he is the mayor of Reston, and is often out picking up trash.
Y'all is picking up, uh, doing a, a saturation of, of Dale Road, and I did a saturation of Evans Drive.
Miss Candy, another.
Oh, there you are.
There you go.
I'm not very far from the chair.
Very far.
Yeah, I have a question, but I also want to piggyback on that. Um, I love the fact that during my fall, I'm up there with a dead animal box. By the time I was coming back, you're either out there looking at it, you know, or it's gone. So I really do appreciate that. But then, I don't know, I think more than half of them now, than they used to do. I see it more often than usual.
People won't stop for you to save it.
And I think you may have to do some, some, well, the constructionists going in the area, when they hear the noise, they're running out to the street. Uh, but one thing that I want to take back to my workers, because I always tell them, um, even though y'all give me the accolades, sometimes y'all call my department and let my secretaries know that my workers are doing a great job, because I can't do it without them, and I ask a lot of my workers. And then we're constantly in contact, so when I get a phone call, um, I'm calling them immediately. Hey, go to this location, and that's why we have such a quick turnaround. But I also like to, um, y'all are telling me how much y'all appreciate the job that I do, but I would appreciate it much more if you called my office and said, hey, um, you dead animal truck guy, you was out here doing a great job, uh, they out here walking the roads great. Because all these accolades that you give my people, I actually put that in their files. And then at the end of the year, we have a, um, I give them a Christmas party. And the more accolades they give, I actually give them certificates, you know, gives additional appreciation, so.
Well, I have a question. There's a, um, I'm looking at a sports bar, um, on one of those towns I think is over there. It used to be a, a two-dollar place or a dollar place, or a two-bucks store or whatever. So that, that place is fully packed, a lot of three, four ton bulk food. And they park all of the...
Um, and if they're illegally parking, that's something that you would have to call, you know, um, police department. So if they're parking under the underpass and it's illegal, you have, you can, um, place a call so they can come out and make a move, or, um, if they have a ticket, so. So it's kind of like, we gotta work together in order to remediate.
But that is illegal parking there?
No. Not under the range of under that.
Right, right here. Did you get your question answered?
Okay, you threw a fair question.
Well, I saw your hand first and then it's on.
I have a question, but I didn't know who, what was going on.
Oh, great.
Okay, so I want to give a thank you off all these partners and places and your people I'm doing. But I have a question about, um, Mount Lion Brook Park, I mean, anything to come out of Matt's Row and Green Meadows, the ones that play parts. That area is always having a lot of the trash, but it's hard for people to come out and clean it and cut the grass because it's under construction. But it looks so bad. So, you know, you need to resolve that because people are keep, as he...
You may not like my answer.
You don't like my answer.
So, any area that's under construction, the county is not responsible, it's actually the contractor. So a lot of times what I do, if it's an area that's unsafe for us to clean, I normally will call Transportation and Development, and they will get with the contractor. They have a contractor, um, to clean the area. Because a lot of areas, the ground is unlevel, they have flakes, various reasons. We can't go out there with the mowers to cut. But, um, a lot of times constituents call in. Now, I can't, I don't have it on my regular schedule, but if you call in and it's like real dirty, I'll go out there and look, I said, okay, we can safely clean this. One area was by vegetable, and it was a line of sight issue, it was unsafe. So I know in order to contact...
I think all of you, y'all, you know, well, cut the, right away.
Yes, ma'am.
Even if you stuff the barrels and everything up, that whole area is always actually under trash.
So I, I have to, um, I have to kind of balance it between safety. Is it safe for me to put M.A. squad, community service workers out there to actually clean the area? But a lot of times, you know, we'll work together with, um, Transportation and Development, because we know that it's gonna take longer. So we will go out there and we will maintain these areas, it's just not something I'm on my regular schedule. Now, once they finish construction, then we'll take back over maintaining the area.
That, that little area you want to look for is likely to have a lot of the construction.
Right. But like I said, Mount Lion, um, Water Park is actually one of the roads that we maintain. And there are certain sections that are not under construction that we do go out and cut the grass and maintain the trash, so like I said...
Yeah, no, it's probably never, like, that's the, that's the area that I'm talking about is, is just never, is, is just totally littered all the time. And with that, Paul, when you're coming, you all come out.
This is it.
And it's because it's under, it's under construction, so.
You know, saying that a lot of times we, we, I'm, 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 cut the right way, and we're hard, like, it's quick, but I understood that.
Yes.
And I appreciate that.
Yes.
But it's just so sad that the one who walked around two nights, like she was saying, the, within hours.
Yes.
It's like, it's like so much times I've grown up, and just throw trash out. This is ridiculous. This is ridiculous.
Okay, I have a suggestion. On O-Rex, my old unincorporated car, I would like to see some signs that say, keep this neighborhood clean.
That won't cause under transportation.
And also, I would like to see some receptacle, so that people walk in, there's no any trash in it. Because they're kind of from Walmart going all the way to forty-two.
I'd like to respond to, sir. Ma'am, they won't do it because you'll find people that won't have home trash pickup, be putting their garbage in it. I, I had a trash can at, at Amberwood, uh, Community, where I'm a, a, a neighborhood watch, and been there for twenty years in that as a neighborhood watch. Had a trash can right there, and people coming down the road didn't even live in the neighborhood dumping their trash.
But that type of trash is a waste of metal.
And people, they, it's what the department is doing, it's actually people are bringing, that use around homes. They're not letting trash service pick up, and so they take that trash, because I see we do an air cleaning, I live in one. And it's because they trash and service sta-, service station dumpsters and other people.
And they should put it in, they don't come. And I'm gonna put it in mine. So I'm gonna put it in there. Thank you very much.
I want to thank each and every one of you all. Uh, I know that we are over time. We have had such a robust conversation, uh, and the weather has turned. And so I want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to get home safely. Uh, again, I just, I really appreciate you all coming out here today. For our folks who have joined on Zoom and be prepared with us through our technical difficulties, and I really hope that this town hall has been an overview about the future of Clayton County, looking at, uh, not only our comprehensive plan, but our zoning ordinance, and then also looking at how that ties into our transportation. If we are going to be building in Clayton County, we also have to talk about all the infrastructure. How are people going to be able to get around the county? And, uh, of course, our, our fi-, our fire stations, um, being able to accommodate that increased call value as our population grows, what we can. These are different aspects around what those roads look like in Clayton County. And I'm so glad that you all got to be a part of the conversation. I want to post my housing activity online so that you all can still participate. I was gonna show you different types of housing options, and then we can talk a little bit about what you want to see, what specific housing you want to see in Clayton County, and then use that information to inform what information should be in our zoning laws, and looking at it not from the perspective of, okay, here is a list of zoning regulations, which ones do you like? Well, no, let's look at some examples of houses, of businesses, and look at what aspects of those communities that you like, and then how can we incorporate that into our zoning design? So I'll be posting that online again. Thank you all so much for joining. I think we still have refreshments in the back. If you have not signed in, please do sign in, that way we can stay in touch. Get you signed up for our newsletter, which we send out weekly. I want to thank our fabulous IT team, Lynn. I hope you're enjoying a lot of good thoughts today. And all our, sorry, and communications, Marcus, for joining us. And I want to make sure that folks who aren't able to attend in person, who aren't able to join virtually by Zoom, they'll have the opportunity to view later, if you all can. Um, and this is the last town hall that I will have this year, but, uh, I'm very interested in reading over the feedback that y'all have given around what topics you want to see us have a kind of deeper dive of conversation in next year's Let's Talk series. And with that, thank you all so much, enjoy the rest of your Saturday. Bye, everyone.